Um, Mr. Silver Smith, are you still on the line? Mr. Bradley?
Yes, I'm on the line, just Daryl.
Okay, um, my community over here has not had the road, dirt road graded in, I don't know, how many months now. Usually they come out every quarter, you know, if they're just being redirected to go someplace else, or what's going on.
Uh, if you can, um, Chair Nez, if you can email me, or, you know, at any time, provide me the route number of that particular route you're referring to, I'll direct, we'll direct our staff toward, toward that direction and blade that road and maybe the surrounding roads in that community. So, we are, we're not fully staffed yet, um, our maintenance staff isn't fully staffed, we are partially staffed, but, no, we, we are hitting areas where we're getting requests for road, roadblading services. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
This is Libby from forty-five, RBO.
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you.
This is Alden Winika from Business Regulatory, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Winika.
Good morning, this is Rosalyn Soh for the IHF team with Indian Health Service.
Good morning, Ms. Soh.
Good morning, Chairman Nez, this is C.T. Willie with the busy Economic Development.
Good morning. Uh, Chair Nez, this is Thomas Walker, I'm on the call now. Good morning, Vice Chair Walker, thank you. Uh, what is your location, Honorable Walker?
I am in Winslow area, Arizona.
Okay. Um, so I believe we- Good morning, um, Honorable members of RDC, we do have a quorum now, we have myself, Honorable Stewart, Honorable Walker, and Honorable Freeland on the line. I believe we could get started right now, it is now ten oh eight, we have a, a long agenda before us. My name is Rick Nez, Chair of RDC, we'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Begay, could you do the roll call, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, and all the, uh, people that are listening in to our teleconferencing meeting. This is RDC's roll call for their regular meeting of June seventeen twenty twenty. Ricky Nez?
Yeah.
Wilson Stewart Junior?
Here.
Thomas Walker?
Present.
Herman Daniels? Mark Freeland?
Here.
K. Allen Begay?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have five members present, and it comes due to quorum for you to conduct your meeting today. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Begay. Uh, Honorable Begay, what is your location?
Uh, Chair, uh, I'm in, at the Minifarm's chapter house.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, do you have any, let's go to invocation, um, Honorable Freeland, would you provide the invocation?
Sure, um, shana, ado, uh, shana kado shetelie, ado, um, all of those listening, um, presenters and, and everyone's staff, and good morning, um, want to go ahead and give thanks and, and, and reflect on, on today, ginonaya. So, let's all bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, our gracious God, our Creator, our Redeemer, our Savior, we thank you for bringing us together at this time to conduct the will and business of the, on behalf of our people, Father. We ask you to protect each and every one of us on this call today, that we may return safely home to our families. Guide us at this time, Father, for one common, common cause and purpose, to battle and defeat this COVID-nineteen, Father. We pray for all of our people right now, all of our people who are, who are unsure, who may be feeling lonely, lonely at this time, Father, give them hope, and get them out of despair at this time, Father. We ask you bless each and every one of our people, our veterans, our, our police officers, all the front-line workers who are serving us in some sort of capacity in hospitals, or access facilities, Father, bless them. Protect them right now, our doctors and nurses as well. We ask you to protect our police officers, all of our, um, corrections officers as well, EMS and fire as well, protect them as they face uncertainties when they answer calls, Father. But you know that with through your guidance and through your protection, you can give them that continuing hope and, and determination that they, that they solely need, Father. We ask you to bless our President, our Vice President, all of our council members, all of our chapter leadership, and all of our local leadership right now, all of those with some sort of leadership capacity, give them the hope, determination, and the guidance to lead at this time, Father. More importantly, we give you the glory and the praise in each, each day that we ask for your continued blessings and protection. Get us home to our families, protect our families as well, for all these things we've prayed in your holy name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland, you should head and hush her in, and we'll go down to announcements. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, do you have any announcements?
Uh, sir, I have no announcements at this time, thank you.
Honorable Stewart, any announcements?
Um, just email, I sent RDC members this morning, that's the only announcement on the, on the post-coming of the event for this Friday. That's all I have, shana. Good morning, everybody.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland, announcements?
You, shanta, ado, um, um, Resource and Development Committee, um, really not an announcement here, but more of a concern. Um, we continue to hear of administrative building one and administrative building two being closed, and I, I would, you know, it'd be nice to get some sort of update or report maybe at another committee level, but I'm a request for that. Um, you know, the finance staff is still working there, I stopped there this morning, but, you know, um, if there's a way, we could ask for an update on what's been going on, because, you know, we, we hear continuously reports of, of, uh, you know, positive cases down there and, and whatnot, but, you know, what's going on is, is, I guess, is really a big question, so, it is, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable K. Allen Begay, announcements?
Uh, Chair, I don't have an announcement.
Okay, thank you. Ado shana, Honorable members of RDC, there's a petition that you can, uh, respond to through email, and if you would like to have a special, special session request on Friday, and also, everybody that's on the line, I would like to respectfully ask you all to put your phones on mute, please, thank you very much. So, if there's no further announcements, we'll go down to recognizing guests and visiting officials. We'll start with, uh, our honorable members of RDC, could you introduce yourselves, Honorable? Uh, Chair, the committee members, staff, and then, uh, the, um, participants on this call for our RDC regular meeting. Thomas Walker, indeed. Uh, good to hear, uh, the colleagues on the line, good to hear your voices. Chair, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Uh, Honorable Stewart? Thank you, Honorable Stewart, Honorable Freeland?
Good morning, uh, Chair, do-
My, uh, delegate Vince James is on the line.
Good morning. Chair, Vince James, thank you for joining the call. Ado, she is, uh, Eugenia Charles Newton, thank you for joining the call.
Oh, yeah, there's been a disaster.
We're, we're basically waiting for Honorable Vice Chair Slater to get back on the call, who was on earlier, and I think he's distracted by some music.
Uh, Chair, uh, Honorable Daniel, so, can I have some time while we're waiting for a quorum, while you guys are waiting for a quorum?
Sure.
Um, I can have, Chair, and then, uh, Honorable members of the HESI committee, um, I, I just wanted to, um, briefly bring up some points that were addressed to me from regarding Kithachi School. I don't know if we have a representative that's on, on the line from DODI as well, but, um, since we're waiting for a quorum, I just wanted to bring up these issues. Um, I, I believe that, uh, DODI had a reauthorization meeting back in December two thousand nineteen of, um, how things are going to be moved forward, and at that time, there was an extension done for six months for Kithachi School, and, um, at that time, there were some conflicting issues that had, that were brought up, and it was never really addressed. And since then, the, um, school board members of Kithachi and community members and staff have been waiting for a stop, submit that indicates that a thing had occurred, and it was done for Kithachi again, and this is in regards to the reauthorization. So, it's really affecting, um, the KDLO, Kithachi, the NEPAL, um, it's really affecting the elected official school board members, administration staff, and staffing on how to move forward, um, in regards to the preparation of opening back the school. And, um, they have plans in place, um, but what hinders them to move forward with some of those plans is that this extension of regarding the reauthorization keeps coming into play, and there's really not a plan that has been sent over from DODI or the school board, um, DODI's education board of members of how they're going to move forward with opening up the schools again. Um, but, I, those are some of the things that I, I wanted to bring up since we're waiting for a quorum, for you guys to be on standby and maybe make a recommendation, um, that we hear from DODI at some times, or if it's okay if we can, if I can set up a meeting with DODI regarding these questions and these issues, um, but I, I don't, I want you guys to be involved, because there's a lot of things that are happening at, um, KDLO, and at the same time, we have individuals that have done outstanding jobs and has great work performance, and are also being relieved from their job, or their contracts were not renewed. So, there's quite a bit of interesting things happening at the, at Kithachi School that hinders them moving forward. So, it's something that I wanted to address with you guys. Uh, I know we don't have that person-to-person contact, but just through phone, so I wanted to bring up these issues, uh, and concerns that we're running into with one of my chapter regions, which is Kithachi, Gannado Cornfield, uh, and part of Augustine Boat, because that's what Kithachi School covers. So, it is, Chair, I, I wanted to bring that up to you guys, uh, as you being the Chair for HESI, and then other, the HESI committee members. I can't, thank you for listening to me, thank you very much.
Oh, Chair, uh, this morning, I forwarded the agenda along with the call-in number on that same email, on our agenda, receiving a report, um, five D, report on Wadron's Community School, and Shipox Alternative School. Presenter is Derek Franklin, and I think Vida Maestas, Vida Maestas, and right now, I know, uh, Mr. Franklin is on the line and listened to your presentation. So, we will address, we will address those, uh, items surrounding the, uh, issues that have been presented to the committee.
So, Chair, in regards to receiving a report on five D, even though it says Wadron Community Schools, um, we can talk about Kithachi School at that time as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, oh, let's, uh, we can, oh, uh, when we adopt the agenda, we'll include that. Uh, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, I'm here.
Derek, oh, can you, uh, I guess hurry up and, and include, uh, um, a summary on Kithachi?
Yes, I, I have the information on reauthorization, as well as the, the guidance for reopening schools, I have the update. Um, we have an acting superintendent, Patricia Gani, um, I don't know if she's on the line, uh, but I will contact her to, um, provide her input as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Ado, Chair, uh, big, uh, Honorable Begay and Honorable Halona. Uh, we can amend the agenda to include, uh, uh, Chair Vince James', uh, um, questions. Okay, um, Honorable Carl Slater?
Sorry, I haven't been able to have my service.
Okay, okay, um, uh, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Moos, let's continue with the roll call.
Hi, Daryl. Uh, Honorable Paul Begay Junior?
Paul Begay's present.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Carl Slater, present.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Pernell Halona?
Halona's here.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Charlene Soh? Honorable Charlene Soh? Honorable Daniel E. Soh?
Uh, present.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Edison J. Winika? Honorable Edison J. Winika? Chair, we have four members cut to the quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum, um, I'm gonna, uh, go, go do things a little bit different. Uh, Chair Vince James, could you provide us the, uh, invocation for today's meeting?
Okay, Chair, um, I can't, Chair, ado na na da HESI committee members, ado da is enough, I should, uh, should, uh, I think, uh, I don't see that, I mean, so I don't finish, I mean, I, I could, I mean, I, I should, I don't, 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 I don't.
Coachella, Coachella, Chair, uh, I don't, uh, announcement, committee members, and, um, honorable delegates, yes, on our, uh, teleconference meeting, any announcements?
That is, Ashanata, this is Alul Sol.
Oh, yeah, it is, Shetel.
Oh, yeah, it is, Naado, I did, uh-
Everywhere.
Uh, sh, 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 shanata, Chair, Asha, na, uh, delegates later, Chair, Mr. Halona, ado da, Mr. Winika, Chair, I can't, I don't, uh, I don't, uh, I don't, uh, I don't, uh, just letting you know that I'm on the line, I have a legislation on the, uh, on your agenda today, so, it, I, it's, uh, uh, I did, uh, it, now, so, I get, so, uh, it's enough, I get, I don't, shana, Chair, James, good to, good to, good to hear your voice, uh, uh, yeah, uh, I don't, all the other delegates that are on the line, good morning, I don't know, go back on mute.
Oh, Coachella, um, I don't, I don't, um, I just got a text message that Honorable Charlene Soh is on the line, at the record show, she got into the meeting call at ten thirty-one. Uh, what, uh, Shabiza?
Oh, yeah, it's been a good morning to you and everyone of you. A little bit, um, having a problem, it's windy where I live, so, my call may drop again, but I'll, I'll be sure to get back on it. Oh, good morning.
And, uh, uh, so, uh, quickly, let's, uh, all the folks, uh, on the line, can you just, uh, give, give notice that you're, uh, participating in the call? Item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials.
First is Chair, good morning, with Alex Keith.
This is Lorraine Hallwood with Ababi.
Jessica Cooper with Alberta State.
Good morning, this is Ocal Cole with the Family Crisis Center in Farmington.
Good morning, this is Better Month from Carson Family Health Center.
Good morning, this is Richard Edwards from Shipox Associated Schools.
Emily Ellison with Batter Family Services.
Good morning, this is Isabella Robbins with Navajo Nation Council Chief Staff.
Good morning, Deanna Nesswiddgishy, Division of Social Services.
This is Regina Yazi, Department of Family Service, Department Manager.
Good morning, Rosalyn Begay with Navajo Division of Social Services.
Good morning, Chair, so, this is Cheryl and Yazi from Office of the Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Rod Haven from Legislative Council's office, thank you.
Ms. Sohsey with Division of Social Services.
Anybody else? This is, this is Aldi Winika.
Oh, yeah, it is, Shetel.
Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So. Chair, we have a vote of four zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let the record show four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Uh, then we go to, um, review and adopt, uh, journals there being none. We'll go on to receiving the report, uh, item five A, uh, update report from Navajo Division of Social Services regarding shelters and, um, COVID-related, uh, burial assistance. Ms. Yano Neswick Gishy?
Hello?
Oh.
Oh, yes, I see, yes, this is Delegate Charlene So. I lost the call again, but I vote green.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's, uh, uh, verify that the vote to adopt the agenda is five in favor, zero opposed, and chair not voting. Okay, so we are to receiving the report. Five A update report from Navajo Division of Social Services regarding the, uh, domestic, uh, violence shelters.
Good morning. Health Education Human Services Committee, uh, G Division of Social Services Director. Uh, um, so, um, we did service shelters dated June seventeen twenty twenty. Um, I will, um, turn my time over to Regina Yaizie who will do the report, but I will be on the line as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and good morning again. This is Regina Yaizie. I'm the department manager for Department of Family Service. So the report that we submitted, um, I'll just briefly mention that, um, the seven professional service contracts for the shelters, um, they remain pending with Department of Justice, um, until the shelters all submit their updated, um, certificates of liability insurance as recommended by Department of Justice and Risk Management Program. And on June twelfth, which was last week Friday, we sent out letters to all the shelter in writing that they're, they need to update their insurance liability certificates and have those submitted by the fifteenth, which was, um, a couple of days ago on Monday. Um, two of, two were reassessed, re-reviewed by Risk Management, um, that were submitted. Two were submitted and so they were resubmitted to, um, Risk Management for another review. Um, one was deemed to be sufficient, one of the two, and then while the other one remains, um, pending, um, for additional information. And then on June fifteenth, which was on Monday, we had an online video meeting, uh, with, um, the seven shelters and which included, um, uh, Ms. Neswick Gishy, myself, we had, uh, our accounting person, our contact Carl Slater on the call as well. And then, um, on the, on this, so on that, on that meeting, the, uh, Ms. Neswick Gishy informed shelters, they were to, um, that we were, the Division of Social Service was going to go to the contract for services contained in the original scope of work and the original budgets that were submitted, um, back in twenty nineteen. So we were going back to that and that, um, uh, so that was the primary purpose, purpose of the, of that call was to make that announcement and then also to ensure that the shelters, um, questions that needed to be updated were, were also answered, um, and that we also informed them they were going to be resubmitted for another review and assessment by Risk Management once we receive them. So the shelters, um, the shelter providers were reminded to submit them by the fifteenth. Um, however, like I mentioned earlier, um, two of them submitted them and then I believe, um, as of yesterday evening, uh, yesterday afternoon, evening, two more came in. So we do have the, the four that came in of the seven. That's our update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yaizie. Uh, committee members, do you have any questions?
Uh, Chair, do we have one still on the line right now too?
Uh, can you repeat that?
Do we have anyone from OMB right now who covers this program?
Um, Ms. Martinez, uh, do we have anybody?
I thought I heard some on the line, um, announced themselves as being contracted great.
Uh, there was Office of the Controller on the line, Valerie, um, somebody from Office of the Controller was on the line.
Okay, um, Honorable Slater, did you want to state a question? And in the meantime, um, Ms. Martinez? From OMB on the call. Um.
Yes, Chair, the question, the question is mainly concerning grant performance, how they perform under these grants. And then I'd like to see the budget information that shows the breakdown on how they're spent, how much they're to external entities, how much is retained by the nation, and see what the performance scores are there. But I'm just concerned that this is delayed for so long, is it going to, um, future funding? We're not able to draw that up at this stage.
Okay, uh, Ms. Yaizie, did you, um, understand, um, Honorable Vice Chair Slater's question?
Um, it's not very clear, the, um, phone call, his voice, I, I just heard the overall budget, that's what I, that's what I heard. Regarding budgets, I would like to defer to, um, Brenda Sosi to do the breakdown regarding the funds that were, that the Division of Social Services received.
Uh, yes, and I think the other part was, uh, in years past, what was, uh, the reversion back to the federal government. So Ms., uh, is Ms. Sosi on the call also?
Good morning, uh, this is Brenda Sosi with Division of Social Services. On the question, um, the breakdown of the budget.
We can't hear anything.
I'm sorry. No, I'm not. Can you hear me? Um, okay, okay. I'll talk, can you hear me now? Okay. All right. My name is Brenda Sosi. I work with, um, Division of Social Services and I'm helping Department of Family Services as well. So the, um, FY twenty funds were received in March and, um, well, that's when it was inputted into the, um, FMIS system. And the family, um, well, it's called the Family Harmony Services, um, now, which it was formerly known as Strengthening Families Program. And this, um, program is under the Department of Family Services, um, that was, um, with our recent, um, plan of operation changes. For the FY twenty, um, the, the funding that I'll be talking about, uh, we got an allocation of one million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five. So this funding was split thirty percent for administration and seventy percent for direct services. So for the thirty percent for administration, use was five hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. And the seventy, um, percent for direct services was allocated one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two. But they were split in three areas. One million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven is for the, um, shelter contracts. And then the twelve, twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars was for the IDC. And then there was a also, um, operating cost that was set aside for Gentle Ironhawk Shelter and Shiprock Shelter. That was for a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen. So that's how the allocation was done for the, um, one point, um, eight million that was received for FY, um, twenty. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Uh, committee members, do you have follow-up questions?
Chair, this is Delegate Charlene So.
Uh, yes, uh, we'll go to Honorable Charlene So first and then, who was the other one?
Uh, it was Delegate Slater. I, I was able to get back on the line. I hope the connection is better now.
Yes, they sound a lot better. Thank you. Uh, we'll go to Honorable Charlene So first and then we'll go to Honorable, uh, Carl Slater.
She, she asked if I could make that request to get the, um, I guess copies of the budget. I have been facing a few concerns as well as with concerns of my constituents. Of course, with this pandemic, um, domestic violence and violence on children has increased. So what I primarily want to address with this phone call or with this presenter and, um, with this, uh, division is that, um, the funding, the lack of funding for the Gentle Ironhawk Shelter and blending, and of course, that's owned by Navajo Nation for years now. And we, I've gotten several reports that DB victims and children have been turned away. And I, I would like to get a thorough, um, analysis of why this is the case as far as with the, uh, shelters not receiving payments. So if we can look at the budgets of what has been presented or, um, that's my request, she asked, or she asked.
Okay, Ms. Sosi and Ms. Yaizie, uh, take note of those questions and I'll, uh, go to Honorable Carl Slater.
Chair, were you saying to go to me now or wait for the response?
Let's go ahead and, uh, uh, get your questions on the record and then we'll go back for the response.
Okay. I, I don't have, uh, many more questions. I, I just want to maybe restate what, um, I was requesting for before and why. And it ties back into Delegate So's, um, request for information. But the concern is, you know, if we're not going to be able or some shelters might not be able to take all of the funding this year, um, you know, will we have a reversion back to the federal government? Is that something that has happened in the past? And I'm just curious to know more about this, the grant itself. So that's why I was asking about OMB. You know, sometimes grants from the federal government can have contract durations longer than, you know, fiscal year, or the tribe can pull money and use it more flexibly. I don't, I don't think that's really the nature of these grants, but, um, I just wanted to know more information about that. And I'm happy to seek that information outside of NASA offline. Um, and the second part is, I just want to express my appreciation to Director Neswick Gishy for organizing the meeting on Monday. I think that it's an important first step in really rehabilitating the relationship between the shelters and the, uh, Division of Social Services. And that it, it shouldn't be, you know, a one and done. We did what the committee asked us to do and therefore let's keep going, um, on our own accord. It, it should be this sort of collaborative, constantly touching base with the shelters to understand how to craft the best programs, have the greatest amount of communication. You know, I think based off of the communication that I observed on the call, it was pretty free-flowing and could be informal, which really helps build a relationship between the programs, between the program and the shelters. And little things like, oh, we need the Navajo Nation to be insured, uh, be insured on the document, liability documents, you know, could easily have been shared months ago or this past year if this was a consistent, um, form of communication. So that's just one little example right there. And I really ask the program to continue this communication. I'm not sure there was really any resolution from Monday, but I, I still think it's important to continue to meet even if you don't have a resolution at the end of each meeting, you know. So thank you very much, um, and let's keep the ball rolling.
Uh, Chair, this is Winika.
Uh, yes, Honorable, uh, Edison Winika. Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the House Committee, Honorable President, and then also, uh, Delegate So and Delegate James. I'm really waiting to hear from, uh, Honorable So's report because, uh, I'm glad that Delegate Charlene So, comments made by Slater, because, uh, these shelters, I think we need to, uh, maybe, uh, have the shelters, uh, give us a report exactly how the programs are going. The Department had said, yeah, I should not have done general delay, but I need to know. I quite agree with you, Chair, so, uh, just schools, schools and the, and it seems like we get more information by going out to the location and then we get the true story. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Uh, House Committee members, other, uh, colleagues from the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, um, I guess number one, um, the reference to the blending shelter and the shiprock shelter. Can you expound more on what services they provide? And, uh, I, the other is, what is the blending facility's budget amount and what is the shiprock, uh, roundabout information? It's makes a tree or treetop, shelter services? I don't know the official, um, program name for it. If you could give us some budget amounts and how many personnel are, uh, employed there and the type of services and how many kids are available. Uh, you know, in the previous calls from the nonprofit, the domestic shelters that, um, are part of this, uh, funding, um, they've given us the, um, overview of their services and, and we really haven't heard from the blending facility or the shiprock facility. So at some point, uh, and, and basically just give us the quest, the, uh, answers to the questions and then at some point in time, committee members, we could hear from the actual, um, managers of those, uh, shelters. Is, is, uh, the thought from the, um, my position as Chair, okay, the committee members, but Ms. Yaizie and Ms. Sosi, back to you.
Uh, this is Brenda Sosi. Uh, thank you for the question. Um, in regards to the Gentle Ironhawk, um, shelter, we are working with the, um, there's only one staff that's there. Um, we haven't opened up the shelter yet, but they were budgeted, um, like I said, the hundred and six thousand, um, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Um, that's really a share between the Gentle Ironhawk and also Shiprock in regards to, you know, the operating costs. So we are, um, working with them to expend the funds. We did have a conference call with them about two weeks ago and they are getting their quotations and whatnot. And so we're getting prepared to, um, open that one up. Then for the Shiprock Shelter, it's been ongoing. They have, um, um, victims that go there and, um, that, um, that has been operating for, you know, quite some time now. Um, I would say for almost three years now. So the, the staff are fully staffed there. There's victim witness advocates and also, um, they have an admin staff which is an office assistant that's there as well. Um, so that's been ongoing. And as far as, there's another question that, um, for the, how are the payments, payments being paid? Um, I guess this is regarding to the shelters. Well, the shelters, um, they're on a reimbursement, um, contract. So that's what we're, um, that's what Mrs. Yaizie was just, um, talking about where it's still at DOJ, um, you know, we're trying to get the insurance, um, documents submitted, so verified, so that way we can, um, go forward with that. So those are on cost reimbursement. They will, they did provide their budget and their allocation amounts were given to them. So that's the, um, accounting side of it is where, you know, it's a cost reimbursement for the services that they're providing. And then there was another question that what, um, were, were, are there going to be, are we anticipating any reversions? Um, that, um, on the admin side, you know, the personnel's there, so they're absorbing, um, that funding. And then for the domestic violence, um, shelter contracts for the one point one million that they're allocated, then their, that one point one million is split between, um, the seven contracts, um, the, I mean, I mean, the seven, um, violence, um, family violence, um, shelters contracts. So then the IDC and then of course, that, uh, I was just talking about the Gentle Ironhawk and the Shiprock Shelter. So that's how, um, it's budgeted. Then last year, um, the reversion, um, was thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one, which is the IDC cost. It, it seemed like that, that was never picked up because this is a pass-through. Um, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Um, and again, I, uh, as, uh, Honorable Charlene So requested, requested if we could have the, um, uh, budget, um, uh, printout, the, um, breakdown, we can, I guess have a better view of what you just summarized. Uh, committee members, do you have any other follow-up questions?
Hello, uh, Chairman So, this is Delegate Brown. I have a question if I may.
Oh, yeah, thanks for joining us on this call. Uh, go ahead.
Yes. And thank you to Navajo Nation Social Services, um, everything that you are doing, especially during this pandemic and even before. With that, um, I really want to know how Social Service is going to move forward. Um, when last term we had, this, this problem has been going on with getting federal grant money to, to many of the shelters that have been helping our Navajo people. And we have been meeting on this and it seems like it's going back to that unfortunately. Maybe it's because of the transition of division directors and staff. Back then, when we met at, uh, for two days, um, Miss, I think her name is Michelle Jones, Michelle DeGate, who really helped on expediting, getting grants, getting funding to a lot of the shelters on Navajo and surrounding Navajo. So I, I'm, I meet with Navajo Nation, uh, or Kanta Shelter, Kanta National Shelter on a regular basis, dropping off supplies and also, uh, uh, whatever we can. So I, I do fully understand, um, where, where they are. And maybe if you can share with us, maybe if, maybe if you can get Michelle to come, like, meet with her, um, and have her bring some of the remedies that she created. And since she left, I understand that she's with Navajo Nation, um, gaming. Um, but anyways, I think, um, if we can look for solutions, because in Kanta, as you heard last week from Ms. Carm Blackwater, um, who's actually really, really great and, and securing a lot of her own funds, but all her employees, you know, some of them have to go on furlough, the kind of the same broken records that we're seeing all the time on, on, on our Navajo Nation employees. And then sometimes they have an outrageous utility bill because they can't pay it. The second part would be to, um, through Social Service, are you, um, I, I know sh- shelters and the other shelters. So, um, with the CARES Fund, um, we have been talking about, um, using some of those funds to, to secure, to secure for the, uh, uh, for, for these shelters. So I wanted to know what Social Services' plans were in making this happen. So, um, to use some of the COVID relief funding. And I know that, my understanding from last week's report, that the preventative services through Ms. Teresa Galvin's, um, department, um, that whole department, Navajo Nation Department of Behavioral and Mental Health Department, I mean, and if I understand correctly, did they receive over six hundred and twenty-three million on the same expiration date as the Navajo Nation CARES Fund and all the other funding? What is going on with those funding? If we have that amount of money, um, we should be using them on these shelters because they already, they already exist, they already have employees, they already have boards, and they have been doing their best to stay afloat. And the last thing we want is of course for these doors to shut down. We're losing a lot of great staff who actually, who have a huge heart in helping our people struggling with domestic violence and a lot of other social ills that are, that's out there, um, plaguing some of our people. So how can we help? How can, how can we help? Do we need to hire a specialist on who can just working, work on these funds? Uh, when they come in, I know the dates are different when funding, uh, the budget process for Navajo Nation is a different date as the federal government and they all seem to be. the budget process for Navajo Nation is a different date as the federal government and they all seem to be different. How can we align with each other so we can get funding out there? So I'm gonna continue to express these concerns. Um, I hope, I hope that we can come to something because I I I see and I'm I'm there at the shelter uh meeting with them. They call me, they they're constantly. Um, sometimes Ms. Blackwater has to send me information, asking like, Nate, can I just get six thousand dollars so I can get my my staff paid so they can pay their bills? They're getting, you know, their vehicles might be getting repossessed. So um, these are the people that we really need. So thank you. Um, I stand here um in support and how we can help you. So if you want to ask, I'll teach you. Yeah, sure.
Uh, she was aid only. So uh, I guess the the main intent is to get um these funds out to our uh um folks uh that really provide the services and then the one, I guess, for myself as chair um to find out that there are two Navajo Nation operated shelters. And one hasn't opened. But is listed for services. And then the other, the Shiprock one. I understand um the level of service isn't as as, is as adequate as it should be. And that the same, and a government-run domestic shelter is being outdone by nonprofit domestic shelters. And and so for me, it's like, how, how does that happen? Anyway, um, Ms. Yazi, Ms. Sosi, um, we we definitely need to reevaluate the aspects of this particular grant. And again, um, committee members, I leave it up to you on how to proceed. Um, the chair is open for a motion to accept the report. So far, what, and then Ms. Sosi, Ms. Yazi, how uh how do you? Yes?
Sure, this is Lorraine Hall. Can we, can we elaborate on the meeting as well as what was just reported as Shelter Director?
Uh, yeah, let's uh, if you could make it brief.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm, um, committee members of of the HESI Committee. So our meeting, we just went around and around again on Monday. Um, the same thing. And then um there was a lump sum mentioned by by Gishi and she, uh, I don't know how this lump sum to the shelters would work. If that was the case, then how come that didn't happen before? Um, I know before we, when we had requested for uh an an advance from these grants, we were informed that it had to go through the one sixty-four process, which we all know is a lengthy process. And then uh we were informed, put, just put them under supplies and she said, no, are we gonna put in a hundred thousand dollars worth of PPE supplies? That doesn't make sense. Every year, we're not in quarter, whole, quarter in the house, you show. Um, just do emergency hire, spend the money, get supplies by the boat, and that should not even be the case. And then what just really um upsets me right now is that Gentle Ironhawk Shelter Director, there's only one person there and she's absorbing the funds from the federal funds and we're still waiting for that for the past nine months. I'm just really upset about this, the way, the way it been handled. And um we're still awaiting and awaiting some of these shelters. We submitted our liability insurance, but I guess we still need to add more stuff to it. Some of these shelters, we put the insurance in our budget to pay for our insurance and it's not cheap. And we're just waiting for this. So that's my stand on this and I just wanted to to say that. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Uh, good morning. This is Teresa Warren, Dallas's place. I just wanted to add a little bit on um how all of this is affecting our program as well. So we have a shelter both in the Windlow and in the Dope area. Um, we have been providing full services this entire year without any lag in what we're doing. We've been drawing on, excuse me. We've been drawing on the serve that we have worked very hard to build in this program to keep us strong from year to year. And this is what we're drawing on to gather everything that our contract, which was promised to us last year and in good state, we all continued. And I know that we have our shelters stayed full. They are all full. Every bed is filled right now in both shelters. We are doing our mobile advocacy. We are reaching out into the communities. We are doing everything. And then some of what we have said we would do in our scope of work. And from now, what we're being told is this four-year budget, twelve months of our expenses. Who's gonna be able to get four months of that? Which means you question, someone asked the question, what about funds? Half of my contract is at risk to being reverted at this point. If we cannot go back and capture the expenses that we have put out, that we have put out in good state based on the promise that we were given. If we cannot go back and capture those expenses from October one, you are gonna see a large reversion in funds. And when that happens, it it really concerns me as to what will happen from here, because you all know when you revert federal funds, that will we truly get them again? And how, where do I get my reserves to pay that? I don't. And that part is not the saddest part to me. This is the part that so many of these programs are on the verge of having major, major issues because they're not supported. So I'm sorry. Um, I appreciate everything that we have always done with Navajo Nation. We're so grateful for everything that, the support that we've received and will continue to receive. And we're very pleased to hear about this multi-year contract that they're working on. But the year that we are in right now, it is not just about trying to get the funding out. It's trying to get the funding out and how to go back October first. And I have yet on any of the meetings and calls that I've been on, heard a real legitimate reason why we are not able to do that. So I would like to find out why are we not able to go back to October first? You tell me that the thirty percent administrative cost will have no problem being spent down because the administrative people are in place and they are being paid. But for nine months, a lot of people have not been paid. So how do you recoup that at this point? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello. Can you allow me some time?
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, the hearing from the contractors out there and people that are providing the service out there on behalf of the Navajo people. And it sounds like there's something wrong with the program, the administration. They're not pushing in, they're not pushing these monies out. And someone, I really like to say this on council floor, someone is asleep at the wheel. If we revert, if the Navajo Nation revert money back to the federal government in a huge amount, just think how the newspaper would take this Gallup Independent. And who do we hold responsible for this? Who do we hold the Navajo Nation leadership, shanana? But all na ha bek efeo, ni hich edet ah. Akoh epe bena bena ki, koko eten nen li ni bech wad ka epe bena bena kee, ni hich edet ah. Off of the people count. As these dollars are supposed to be administered and these dollars are being hoarded in Wudgera. So ho sandi ke tama han, huh? It's not at the legislative branch. Where alcohol.
Put that scene on. The white scene.
How do we hold the program managers responsible for not pushing the monies out? Program out there that provides these shelters for sheltering the nation. She's a knick. Alcohol. There's money getting dollars.
Look at Shaw.
And at this time.
The HESI's do, uh, on the line.
Where we mandate.
Please put your phone on mute.
Where we mandate our division director and our managers to expedite the dollars out directly to these programs. So that these programs such as the facility in Blanding, the facility in Kanta, the facility in uh Shiprock. They can have their dollars year round. They provide services.
Chair, sir.
Alcohol.
Oh my God.
Chair. On mute.
Alcohol. I believe um we have to say.
How to go?
Sanction. How do we sanction, maybe that's the word, send a message to the program? Do we sanction all the division directors and social services and the managers? That tend to um do their work to get these monies out. Because right now we have looking at the number of citizens that have on the news. Helping service programs that revert so many millions of dollars back to federal government. Alcohol, epe, gogo na, shanana, ah, maybe not some that we could look at as policy. They, they, um, love. And I believe this will all take a NABI. And since the, if this is a six thirty-eight contract, now the T, now the TFS committee is the oversight of these six thirty-eight contracts. If you have the other delegates weigh in, the delegates that are not on the line, such as the one, uh, such as Eugenia Newton Charles, Chairman uh Man. You know, Thomas Walker, how would they feel when, when, when they're told we're having monies to be reverted back to the federal government? Alcohol, ah, she, ah. And uh we had that issue with NHA. We reverted ninety-two hundred dollars of our CDHD dollars at one point. We would have built many homes, but we've reverted those dollars back. And uh, then now, hunna na han, honey, gee, eh, eh. Alcohol, we need to hold them responsible, shanana, ah. And I believe if we can go down the path, let's go and move forth and um get this report to Navajo TFS Committee as a whole. Um, and 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 address this issue because it's troublesome. Ah, she, they don't got any, they need to, they need. Alcohol, ah, see, ah, see, ah, see. And uh, ah, she, she, ah. But uh, uh Chairman uh Daniel Thoreau, if you can um have um uh, if you can, request that this report is given to Navajo TFS Committee. So that the whole council, we represent the Navajo Nation as a whole. And we need to hear this. My other colleagues need to hear this. Alcohol, ah, see, ah, it, they were up, ah, she, she, oh, this, shanana, ah. You can't have for this time.
Chairman, so this is Delegate Crotty with a question.
Uh, uh, yes, go ahead, this uh Honorable uh Crotty.
Uh, thank you Chairman. Uh, thank you committee members for allowing me uh to be on um this call and ask this question to Department of Social Services regarding uh the Navajo Nation shelters. Um, I think what's important to note, Chairman and my colleagues, is this is a systemic issue that has um plagued our Navajo shelters and um our Navajo service providers uh for decades. A a solution um about four years ago was to create the Strengthening Families Program so that they could have dedicated staff, not only that they would be advocates, but a dedicated staff to assist and uplift um prevention services, not only on Navajo Nation, but um creating uh collaborative efforts with the surrounding service providers. I I think um, well, what I know and what it looks like is we're reverting back to some of the serious problems and challenges that we faced in the past, um in terms of long delays uh for this funding, in terms of um accountability from the Navajo Nation um to expedite and and provide um services or funding, whether it's reimbursable. And uh and the the Social Services Division being a uh when they changed their plan of operation, um I did raise uh these issues in terms of why we should keep Strengthening Families Program separate, their own family services. Because what happens is staff will try to um not focus on uh the shelter and victim services. And I I think uh it was a step in the wrong direction uh from the administration. And I, and I would ask the committee to reexamine uh their plan of operation and properly place uh the former Strengthening Families, um now Family Harmony uh program um to separate it from family services so that we can have a a focus on providing um relief to our community members and relief to Adabi and other providers who for many years have um been the beacon of hope uh for families who are, who are in a difficult situation. When it comes to the six or gate contract, uh I believe that we should review and again to keep accountable is when this money was received by Navajo Nation, and I'm looking at the document from the controller, that this was uh signed uh by the that this was, uh, signed, uh, by the Navajo Nation, and that should have some legal weight. That should, um, provide some legal relief to the shelters who are now finding their contracts null and void. Um, I would ask if, um, our legal counsel can look at those documents and, um, give us guidance as delegates in terms of the validity and, um, the role that Navajo Nation DOJ played in terms of, um, voiding out those contracts and, and under what provisions are, are they using? And if it was, um, the fault of the Navajo Nation program, then as delegates, how can we assist in providing some direct relief? And that could be done, um, Chair and committee members, uh, through a UUSB, uh, request for critical care. I also, um, we have legislation, uh, zero one three two dash twenty, that's going to provide immediate relief through Navajo Cares Fund. And I, and I would say that our shelters and direct service providers, uh, should also, um, be part of that package that, um, will be before you on this agenda. Uh, the question that I want to ask from, uh, Social Services is if you can provide a copy of your report to the full council. Um, all of our constituents on and off the Navajo Nation, um, have, have experienced different levels of trauma, different forms of, um, a- aggression. And what I, I, I want to keep the program accountable is the Navajo Nation Government herself, uh, should not be perpetuating, uh, lateral violence onto our service providers. Uh, they're at our mercy, and I think we should, um, be accountable, um, be respectful, and provide solutions, uh, in terms of how we can, uh, give them direct relief. So I think, uh, my solutions are adding an amendment to the legislation, um, to give them direct relief from Navajo Cares Fund, and also, um, looking through why their contract was considered null and void, and, uh, reexamining or amending the plan of operation so that Strengthening Families or Family Harmony can, um, have some independence so that they could fully thrive and, um, and fix these systemic issues that have been plaguing our nation. Uh, I, I say in terms of leadership, if, um, our most vulnerable are not taken care of, then, um, then we can't pray in our other efforts because this is the hard work. And so I appreciate this committee and this agenda and allowing me, uh, those comments and questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, colleagues of the twenty fourth Navajo Nation Council, um, Satilla Otto So and Shama, Shama Yez, um, um, Amber Knessbot Proudie. Um, committee members. Back to you. How do you want to treat this report? Um, number, uh, I guess one is, um, couple of, uh, to also direct that Division of Social Services, um, also present their report to NABI.
Uh, Delegate So, if, um, if I could just make a, a short comment, this is Emily Ellison with, uh, Battered Family Services.
Go ahead.
So, as I've done some calculations, um, about this one point eight million federal FIPS of fund that we've received and that the Social Service Division distributes on behalf of, uh, the US government. Um, the Navajo Government as a whole, that's represented by the Social Services Division, takes forty perc, forty seven percent of that one point eight million dollars. And when you compare that to other states such as New Mexico, Arizona, and Utah, at most they take fifteen percent. So that was just, um, an overkill number that I believe that should be considered. Um, and again, I want to thank you for taking on this task of hearing us out. We really do appreciate this, and it's given us hope during this time. Thank you.
It's, uh, Navajo Nation Education Committee, our meeting online. Yeah.
Chairman, Chairman, Chairman So.
Chair So, this is Delegate Charles Newton, I'd like to also, uh, state something.
Uh. Basila, uh, Shyaz, uh, Eugenia Charles Newton. Go ahead.
I'd say I should ask, um, out of the presenters who gave us the information. I, I also worry about what's happening here in Shiprock, um, with the, uh, the shelters and then also the families. I've been watching the news and I know that there has been an increase, um, um, domestic violence that has been occurring. Uh, but we also, um, I've also been contacted by a few of the shelters asking if we can assist with, uh, cleaning products and also, uh, food, maybe not so much food, but mainly the cleaning products and, um, you know, some food that they can actually send the families home with. Um, so I've been trying to reach out to a few offices, but it's been very, it's been unsuccessful. Uh, so I apologize, I'll keep trying to reach out to them, uh, I haven't got back any word yet. Um, but I do want to say that I think that there are some, um, shelters that have been men- mentioned and also the lack of funding, you know, because coming into office, I feel like every single department, every single division, there is a lack of funding. And it's always a question of, you know, how much money, uh, you know, do we give to each department or division? We understand that each one is important, each one has their, um, merit. And, uh, I do apologize that, um, you know, that your, your program is, um, is lacking funds as far as, as far as I understand. Um, but I, I'm also talking, because I also got recent, I, I got, um, contacted recently, um, by a person who was talking about a shelter that's, that's in Blending and that's owned for the Navajo Nation. Um, and my understanding is they are unable to, you know, uh, domestic violence victims and families. And I'm, I'm assuming that that has something to do with the funding as well. And as my, um, my sister Amber, uh, Honorable Proudie stated, you know, we have to go back to the UUSB. Um, but I think, you know, in, in the way that I heard your presentation and also what's going on during this time and it's being reported on the news, you know, that domestic violence has increased because of the stay at home orders or the treaties that are currently in place, that, you know, to me, it sounds like, you know, some of, you know, some of this money that we are receiving for, um, you know, for the COVID nineteen and also even with the CARE Act. It sounds like you guys could be eligible for that. So, I, I, maybe, maybe you did present on that and you did state that you are going to be seeking funds for that? And perhaps that's the reason why, um, should, uh, uh, um, Honorable, uh, Charlene So ask for your budget? Um, but it's a good idea to see how much, uh, you guys are underfunded. Because I think your department, um, really has taken a toll as far as, uh, what has happened here. We talk about, uh, we talk about, uh, family, we talk about, you know, moving, uh, moving forward in a positive way. And yet we, you know, have somehow, with the lack of funding, have forgotten, uh, these, these various departments. So just know that I am in support of what you all need. And please, if somebody can contact me back about the supplies that were needed, I tried calling Shiprock again this morning and, and they hung up on me. Um, so if somebody could just please contact me back, that would be great, maybe through email. I'd be happy to see what we can put together to try to assist the, um, the offices here, uh, on the nation. Thank you so much for that.
Committee members, uh, Chair is open to, um, for a motion to accept the report and then offer some direction to the program. Um, back to the blending, um, Ms. Yazi and my associate. I guess, uh, what I'm seeing and in what you emailed is, um, it's a, a brief summary. And, and the ch, the Chair feels like that report is incomplete and not sufficient for, um, uh, the committee. You know, we're, we're, through this conference, we're finding out there's two shelters that's operated by the Navajo Nation. One isn't open, but there's persons on salary. All the way from October to now, it sits there with an unopened shelter. And then over on the other one, you, you basically told us you have staff, but they aren't answering the phone. So how are they providing services if they aren't answering the phone? So, uh, that is a major concern. Um. I don't know if you're being directed to be just providing minimal, minimal information? Or what? But we sure need an extensive report on, uh, this particular, um, the funding, what it provides, and basically then the aspects of, uh, the operations. On the one hand, your, your, uh, these domestic, uh, violence, uh, sho- shelters. You're giving, you're part of a stupid discussion where you were giving them a day rate. And, but the Navajo Nation operated shelters don't, aren't on a similar day rate. So that is a major concern. Committee members, uh, did I lose everybody on that call?
Uh, Honorable Chair, this is Jessica Cooper with the Verdas Place, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Um, my, my biggest fear with this spending for this fiscal year is that we're going to be set up to fail. They're wanting to extend an entire year's budget following the same budgeting guideline, outline, as we would for an entire year, without increasing service rates or, or anything that would, um, make it feasible to extend the term three months. And so, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution that needs to, to address that. Essentially, um, Verdas General Plan that absorbed the contract when they came out in August. I feel like the department has known for a while that this contract and RFP has been out of balance and wasn't going to work. And I'm hoping that they're, they're going to figure something out very soon because, um, I, I'm really bound to the, I'm out of time to spend on it, working on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So it was Ms. Cooper, it was your phone that was really. Uh.
I'm on mute now.
Somebody else needs to put their phone on mute, it's very distracting. Whoever just said I, I'm muted now, you're not on mute.
I unmuted it to say that.
Oh, God. Everybody go on mute, let's see who it is. Okay. Uh. Committee members, uh, how do you want to proceed?
Shyaj, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Shbiza.
This is a, a major concern for me. Um, I'm wondering if the committee could, um, get back to the subject within the next meeting and hoping that our director and the, um, the person, the, uh, manager involved with the blending shelter, I know that she commits back and she comes to both shelters in Shiprock and, and Blending in Shiprock. Could we, um, we need to come to a resolution because I know that, um, with the shelter in Blending, they're turning away victims or no victims there. And we, 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 we can't continue pushing forward, it, it is frustrating. And, you know, it, it kind of seems like we have lies in our hands right now as council delegates. Where's, we should, where's the oversight? We should be able to see that this program is going to see victims, going to be, they're going to be saved. And so I'm wondering if we can get back to that for the next meeting? And, um, if we can somehow get the directors to allocate separate funding for both shelters, if, if we can come to that kind of, um, I guess, strategy and plan, that's, I, I'm trying to get the words together, but it's just, um, a little bit sadistic on my end. So, uh, if we can, if I can also get some guidance on how we can proceed for that, thank you.
Chair, Chair Wanika.
Go ahead, uh, Satilla, uh, Honorable Wanika.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and members of the head committee and, uh, presenters and all those that are listening in. I'll make a motion to accept the report. But, uh, with that motion, I'd like to request maybe a special meeting just for this item, I didn't even hear. Uh, because, uh, this particular, our meeting is turning to, uh, Nabi Kiya T, Marlin. So I, I think we need to, uh, it's very important that we discuss this at length and come to some conclusion. Uh, di ta'ru ya shumre, obasna'na'ha to'lish. Maybe next week, uh, baden hot, uh, uh, di di, and, and tell, uh, uh, Blending and Shiprock and, I don't know if there's, uh, any other shelters. So, uh, so the only thing I'm always concerned about this is, uh, is the department heads again, uh, late at the local level. They don't want to, uh, uh, really say what's going on because of retaliation. I don't know how we can get some information that will really help us, uh, to get to the bottom of this. There'll be my motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, uh, Mr. Ron Haven.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Um, uh, from the last meeting, um, there were some concerns and I think my advice, um, has to be limited to, um, uh, with respect to, I, I, I know, uh, Delegate Slater had some questions on, uh, payments, uh, perhaps for past performance type of.
Uh. You guys have much, that sounds peculiar.
Things that I think for the next, I, I know Mr. Wanika is asking, uh, for, for further, uh, meeting update. First, uh, one of the things I would advise is to, to hear and notify, uh,
Notify.
Attorney General's Office because they provide, uh, the advice to the programs that, um, have been mentioned i- in the last week at least. That includes risk management. That includes risk management, uh, notices to them to, to provide more information on, on the one of the issues at least, a- and that's in respect to, uh, uh, payments back to perhaps due first 2019 for, uh, the Navajo Nation, uh, providers that the nation utilizes. And also another, um, uh, office is the Controller's Office insofar as the denial of perhaps some payments that may or may not have been made. Uh, those two offices, uh, including, uh, Department of Justice, be very helpful insofar as answering, uh, questions that you all have, uh, discussed in, in, in last week's meetings a- as well as today's meeting. So that would be my advice, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for recognizing me, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Latonya Johnson from Navajo DOJ, if I may speak.
Latonya Johnson, good to hear your voice.
Thank you. Um, just to, um, to provide a response, I have, I, I work with Division of Social Services. I have been working on them, uh, working with them on this issue. So I just wanted to make you all aware that I am working with them on the contract issue, including the insurance matter. Mr. Chair.
Chair, can I ask a couple of questions, I haven't stopped on, uh, sent you Johnson away?
Uh, yes, go ahead, uh, uh, Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you. Again, whoever in the background is like cooking lunch or talking, I mean, being incredibly disrespectful right now. Um, thank you to DOJ for being on the line. Um, my question is, I think this is what Mr. Haven was referencing. Is there a way to suspend or amend Navajo Nation procurement and contracts and grants laws so that the shelters could receive or, or, or do expensing for, uh, your expenses in January or February or prior to June first? Um, we, we weren't able to get that to you in writing yet, but it was mentioned last week and we've communicated with the program via email on this. I know that you had a meeting and the resolution was, oh, we'll just follow the existing law, there's no way around it. But when you have a legislative body that's willing to work with you and I believe possesses the power to either suspend those provisions or alter them just for the purposes of this grant, you know, I think we should do that if it doesn't violate anything in the federal grant requirements. Um, and if it does, then it just really highlights how the program has mishandled the grant. But that's my request and maybe we can follow up next week or you could get a memo to us or give us some thoughts right now, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I can provide some preliminary thoughts for now. Um, but I do, but I do wanna note that the guidance I provided to my client and which would be with you all would be more of attorney-client information and I do, and I am aware there are private entities on there. Um, but, um, I can provide some general information as per purposes of this meeting, but I can definitely provide something, um, in writing later. Um, but as far as Delegate Slater's question, um, your question, um, to make sure I'm on the same page as you, it's about whether the, in, whether payment can be paid for prior to the... Sorry, prior to the contract that was starting June first. Um, it really, we, we, I would need to work in consultation with the Controller's Office, um, because we had a similar situation, I believe it was the Annie Wanika situation, um, in which there was concern that there was no insurance during that timeline in which they provided services. Um, and, um, I'm sure you all were aware is insurance cannot be fact dated. Insurance generally as industry standards are more prospective as opposed to retroactive. So, um, it is unclear whether, um, whether we can do payment for services that were conducted back in January considering we don't have any type of insurance that meets the risk management assessment. Um, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying generally we would need to obtain a certificate of insurance that reflects risk management assessment for the services that were provided that we're gonna pay back from January. So let's say there's entity X, they wanna be paid for starting services from January 2020, we would need to see their certificate of insurance that reflects risk management, um, assessment. And if they can provide that, then that's something that we, um, I can work with the Controller's Office and Social Services as far as, um, um, doing some sort of contract provisions. But every situation's gonna be on a case-by-case basis.
So Ms. Johnson, does that mean that if the Navajo Nation is not an insured party on their liability insurance, uh, you know, say for the period that they wanna bill, they, they couldn't possibly receive anything from the nation?
That's, um, that's a concern. Um, I believe the Controller had a similar issue on a, on a same, a similar matter. Um, it could result in audit finding that we, that there was an insurance provided during a time in which we're providing, um, services that the shelters or just any type of entity providing services on behalf of Navajo Nation during that timeline in which we're paying, um, it could result in audit finding.
Is there a way, a way to, um, waive any liability to the nation? If funding was provided to them for services during that time period?
Um, that's something I would need to consult with the Controller's Office, um, and do a provision of any type of waiver, of, uh, any type of waiver services that were provided from like, let's say, January to like May 30th. The same example, um, that the nation wouldn't be liable for any cer- any type of liability that happened from that month to that month, but, um, and to see if that would be acceptable to the Controller's Office and of course, Risk Management Department.
I think we as committee members and even the program, we're all stuck in this position where we have to balance our credit rating and our audit findings and all of that stuff that affects the financial health of the nation due to the actions of one program and, I mean, obviously lots of other programs across the nation that find themselves in similar issues. Versus getting assistance to our people that was needed then, is needed now, and is needed more than ever. So I, I hate that we're in this position, um, when there really were remedies identified from the outset in 2019, years past, on how to improve this process. And, you know, we're letting our people down, that's what this comes down to. So let's get it fixed and I really appreciate your willingness to investigate the issue. And that's my, my very sincere request to you is to figure out how we can help the shelters out prior to the June first start of these contracts. Because it's ludicrous to have them have to spend all this money by the end of the fiscal year. One knows if it will even get out by the end of this month at this point.
Uh, Chairman So, Vice Chair Slater, if I can make a comment, this is Emily with Battered Family Services. Uh, this is the same Navajo Nation Department of Justice that last fiscal year made a legal opinion asking us to pay five percent Navajo Nation tax on federal FIPS of funds. So essentially, they approved a legal opinion of double billing. What I'm hearing right now is they are making excuses on this insurance. Our original contract started October 1st. Why is it so difficult for the Navajo Nation government to fulfill it? A co- a contract that they created themselves? So, I don't know, I, I take all of this with a grain of salt. Um, I wrote them a letter saying, look, in the Navajo Nation条例, it says specifically you cannot tax us. Yet they went ahead with a legal opinion saying that it was possible and doable, so I, I question that. And in talking with other attorneys within the federal system, their comments are usually the Navajo Nation and tribal entities are sovereign nations. They have the ability and require, uh, and are, you know, to govern themselves. And this is one of those opportunities where the Navajo Nation can, Navajo Nation government can govern themselves. And the solution is simple, so fill a contract that was already signed.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson, I guess, uh, my understanding is previously all these, uh, contracted domestic violent shelters had to, uh, furnish a certificate of liability. But in this case, uh, risk management, uh, put in place some, uh, higher, uh, liability values. And, um, and then to also, I can't remember the proper term, to name the Navajo Nation as, uh, certificate holder, I think it was. So, uh, I guess the, the main aspect is, uh, these, uh, shelters by their own, uh, way of operating, they do have li- liability insurance coverage. And so I'm just wondering, um, how that can't be used, uh, in, in basically, um, uh, making these contracts valid? It just seems like, rather than taking each contract differently, if some of these contracts have already furnished their certificate of liability, why is it the program is waiting for the other two that haven't furnished their certificates of liability? But to move these other five contracts forward so we do have a signed contract in, in hand? Uh, that's, uh, that stymies me because that's what's been, um, I guess, forwarded to us in a very brief, uh, summary, a summary of a report, um, from, uh, program manager, uh, Miss Yazi. So that is, uh, something that, uh, is a, is a concern. So, um, if we could have, uh, and, and, uh, Ms. Johnson, we really appreciate your, your openness and wanting to basically, uh, be a, hmm, a solver rather than, uh, somebody that just won't listen. So I, I appreciate that, that tone that you've come, um, through the committee with and, and certainly, uh, we appreciate that aspect. Uh, what else, um, um, and we look forward to really, um, enhancing the, uh, working relationship with you. Uh, committee members, we have a motion by, um, and, and, and in regard to the motion, uh, we will, uh, schedule a special meeting prior to the regular meeting to just, uh, concentrate on a specific, uh, topic. With Ayla Committee, uh, I'll accept that motion from Mr. Honorable Edison Wanika. Do I have a second? Who was it?
Halona Second.
Halona Second, okay. Honorable Halona Second, with Ayla Committee, um, before we do that, we had Honorable Otto So add the burial assistance. We'll change gears to hear the presentation on the COVID-19-related burial assistance. And Ms. Johnson, are you also, are you basically working with the Division of Social Services?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Very briefly, we have citizens, well, survivors who have come to bring issues to the committee that even though they, their relative family members passed away, um, some of the folks aren't being afforded the $2,500 to go to a non-638 contract mortuary or funeral home. And so these families have basically done out of pocket. Uh, there's, so, uh, and it, it just, uh, and, and the part that really troubles the council is, it's like being selective. And so that, that's of great concern. Uh, so, Ms. Diana Nezmetgichi or Ms., uh, Regina Yazi regarding the burial, uh, the COVID-19-related burial assistance? Honorable Otto So, have the committee add this to, uh, your report? Are they, are you still on the line?
Yes, um, thank you, Honorable Delegate. So, um, with the Navajo Nation COVID-19, um, we had an existing, um, contract with eleven, um, contracts through the public law 93638 burial assistance. And so in order to make payments to any mortuaries, they have, um, a, any professional services that is being done requires, um, a contract to be in place. The contract would ensure that the mortuaries are doing, the services are required. And so that's where, um, if, let's say, a mortuary does not follow through with a particular, um, uh, professional service, um, then the nation can come back and, and hold the, the, um, mortuary accountable for the type of service, um, that has been rendered to a family member. And so when there was discussion about paying other mortuaries that we do not have a contract with, um, is where we, um, had tried to reach out to some of the surrounding mortuaries to see if they'd like to consider having a contract with Navajo Nation, um, Division of Social Services. So we did, um, have one of our staff members who, um, is working, um, with the burial assistance. She did reach out, this is Ms. Madeline Key. Um, she did reach out to the mortuaries, um, an example in Holbrook, um, Winslow, um, in Flagstaff. And so those mortuaries were indicating that, um, they did not want to enter into a contract with the Navajo Nation. And so we were not able to begin, um, a new contract with those entities. So, um, I, I do hear the request that, um, we should be considering all mortuaries on and surrounding the Navajo Nation. And so, um, we did have a meeting, um, on Monday, June 8th, with, um, the chief of staff had, um, chaired the meeting. And on the line we had OMB, OOC, um, Division of, our Department of Health, um, Doctor, um, Jill, um, Jim was on the line as well as Ramona, um, Antoniz, who, um, has, who is in charge of the EPI funds. And so we had a discussion on this area as far as how can we pay additional mortuaries that we do not have a contract with? And so, um, the, through the discussion, um, clearance, um, was, there was, um, information provided that, um, we have to have a contract, we have to follow the procurement, um, you know, situation. And so when we have other mortuaries who do not want to have a contract with the Navajo Nation, then, um, we're not able to proceed with that. So I know that, um, there has been some previous emails on this discussion. Um, so with the Navajo Nation COVID-19, the only requirement is the loss, the, the, um, the death is COVID-19 related and the individual has a certificate of Indian blood. There's residency requirement to, to live on the Navajo Nation. Residency is not a requirement. Um, income is not a requirement. And so, with individuals, um, whether they have income or not, um, they, um, are eligible, um, because it's not based on need, meaning the income. And so, there may have been, um, there's comments regarding, um, families are doing GoFundMe, um, accounts, or they're having other donation requests. With the Navajo Nation COVID nineteen, because it's not based on income, if family chooses, um, to do that, that's not a, a reason to deny, or there's not a reason to, um, reduce the amount that the, the Navajo Nation would be paying through the contracted mortuary. So, um, you know, that, that, the Navajo Nation COVID nineteen assistance. Now, we still have the, um, the Public Law Ninety-three Six Thirty-Eight Burial Assistance, um, for individuals who have passed, um, due to non-COVID nineteen. That is still handed by the, um, Navajo Family, um, Navajo Financial Assistance Services. We call it N F A S. Those individuals, um, are still providing that service. Now, we did receive, um, uh, through the CARES Act, additional funding for, um, the Public Law Ninety-three Six Thirty-Eight, um, um, burial assistance. And so, through the six thirty-eight, um, that new allocation, a budget was submitted, um, just over a million dollars for, um, six thirty-eight, um, COVID nineteen burial assistance. Now, that, um, the new standard rate is three thousand five hundred per, um, B I A instructions that we have received. And so, what we will be doing, once the budget has been fully, um, implemented and placed, we will have to do a screening that if the individual is, um, needy and does not have the funds to pay for the burial, then, then, um, the Navajo Family Assistance Services, which is under the Department for Self-Alliance, they would be, um, doing the application, um, for need base, and that's where the majority of the cost would be covered of the, the three thousand five hundred. So, some of the additional costs that families may incur right now is, um, the, when they pick up, um, the body, they, they have additional costs. Um, transportation from the place of death to the mortuary is at additional cost. Um, if there's, um, the, the cost of a body bag is additional cost passed on to the family. So, when we're looking at the Public Law Ninety-three Six Thirty-Eight Burial Assistance for COVID nineteen, that three thousand five hundred would actually cover the majority of those expenses. So, um, again, that one is, um, need based, meaning that they don't have the funds to pay, um, for the, the burial of, of that decedent. So, um, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Committee, uh, do you have any questions, uh, regarding this issue to ask? Honorable Otto So.
Uh, thank, I, I, I thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, and I thank for, um, Diana Nezwood Gishi for providing her report related to, uh, the, the, the COVID nineteen burial assistance. And to me, that's additional information. And, uh, more information that could easily be rendered out to the services, out into the, um, service program, um, out at each agency, so that families will understand directly. And, um, I bring this issue up because there's about five families, six families that reach out to me, and as they really had different issues, and, and, uh, some were COVID-related deaths, some were not COVID-related deaths, and so forth. But, at the, at the bottom of the, they were constituents of Western Navajo. And there's actually one from Fort Define. And, um, I reached out to Honorable, um, um, Stewart to try to, try to see if he could intervene and help that family. And, um, but, um, the, I have a, um, a, 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 an individual on the line that actually went, is a survivor. And I guess I want to, I want to bring forth the story of that individual, um, what he and his sister gone, went through related to this, uh, billing, if, uh, um, um, issue. And this is a mortuary that's outside of the contract. They don't have a contract with the nation. They choose not to have a contract with the nation for a reason. And, um, and that reason is very legitimate. And, uh, I guess at the end, um, I'm gonna have this gentleman tell his story. And, uh, these are our citizens out there that we represent. As he finish up, I'll, I'll wrap up with, with my portion. But, um, but, oh, um, Mr. Jess Begay Junior, can you go ahead and, um, introduce yourself and, um, go ahead and, uh, tell your story relating to, to the, um, to the issue that, that you have and you've gone through related to our tribal program? And, uh, it, yeah, Jess, you have the line.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Honorable, uh, Delegate, uh, Jess Begay Junior, uh, to share.
That, that's right. That is, there's mortuary that they didn't want to be contracted with the Navajo Nation.
Hello?
Somebody talking about mortuary contracts, please. Need your phone.
Hi, um.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Jess Begay Junior is, uh, my name. Uh, my father was Jess Begay Senior. Uh, he was an essential worker, over-the-road truck driver. Uh, he traveled all over the place. Uh, he just happened to be in, um, Pennsylvania, and he got very sick. Uh, he didn't really know what it was, but, uh, uh, I hear a lot of background noise, sorry. All right, um, yeah, my father, he, he was in Pennsylvania. He got sick, and he went to the, he got an ambulance. We called an ambulance, our family, got him to the doctor. Uh, they confirmed that he had COVID nineteen. He spent, um, a month in the hospital. He's on the ventilator. Some days good, some days bad. We were across the country away from him. Uh, we, we missed him very much, and we, we thought he was coming home. We thought things were on the positive side, but, um, it didn't go that way. Uh, he passed away last week, today. And so, you know, all the travel arrangements to get him home, the, the mortuaries we had to contact, the type of burial he wanted, things, things like that, they really added. And I got in contact with Social Services, and I, I kinda just had to run around. But luckily, somehow, I ran into Otto So, helped me out. And the rest of it was my, my family. Uh, my, my dad, he's, he's from Hollamese, Arizona, and he, he lived out there all in his young years. But, you know, the relocation, we couldn't stay out there. So, our family ended up moving out to Flagstaff. And, uh, us living out here, um, it's, it's not the reservation. I understand that. And I know we were talking about contracts that the Navajo Nation had with, uh, all these mortuaries, and they didn't include, uh, Flagstaff Mortuary. When we were talking to mortuaries here in Flagstaff about where we wanted to bury him and how we wanted to do it, we talked to a mortuary in Flagstaff. And I asked them about the Navajo Nation Assistance Program with the Social Service, and they had told me that they don't do business with Navajo Nation, because there had been too many times where the Navajo Nation had fallen more than ninety days late on payments. And as a member of the Navajo Nation, I, I held my head down. I was, I felt ashamed of us. I mean, I'm supposed to be a proud member, and I, I just wanted you guys to hear that part. And the runaround, it's not good to go through when you're dealing with the loss of your dad. And I'm glad that Otto has reached out and helped me. It's, it feels, it feels pretty good to be helped that way. And, uh, the presentation before about no, no income required, the having, not having residency, and even the GoFundMe, I mean, it puts us in the, in the good area. My family, and what I'm most concerned about is that contract. And, I mean, I know it's a contract, but to me, all I think of is the, don't all, all I have to do is just get a check from you guys? Because, I mean, I, I'm sure it's not a contract where you guys set up payment, but I'm just assuming that it's just a, a check that's in honor of my dad to help out being a Navajo Nation member. And that was just a little bit of something I wanted to fill you guys in, just let you know about what he went through and stuff, and what we're going through. But, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Jess. And, um, committee members of the Health and Human Service Committee. I guess this is a direct testimony that's on the record. It's on the Health and Human Service Committee record that what our families, what families are going through across the Navajo Nation. If it's happening in, in Western Navajo, I guarantee you, it's going on in your agency, shouldn't I? Uh, it's going on in your hometown. Our Navajo people out there are being, to me, singled out. In this case, I look at it as Jess Begay Senior being discriminated because they can't get any money out to that certain mortuary. But by the law and by policy, Jess Begay Senior still qualified to receive those funds, because he's still a member of the Navajo Nation. That's the main thing. The census number. And I really would like to see if the committee could look into this. You know, I could bring on, bring on five more families next week to provide direct testimony to you of what hurdles they jumped through. One of them is so furious that, you know, the same way. If you guys cannot honor us or help us with these dollars that are set aside, why offer the assistance over the unchallenged? See if you can take that back to the administration. No, I believe now, because of the Human Service Committee. I really hope that, um, the committee shed light on, uh, some sort of light on this, whether we need to change policies. But in this case of Jess Begay Senior, he's definitely qualified for, but, but policy is, is, is a hindrance. That's one. Number two, there's no other advice, alternative options given to the family to, to, to say, how can we do this? How can we think outside of that? In our administration that's in the office right now, this is their responsibility. They vouch to, to, to take care of the Navajo people through the executive branch. As legislators, we have certain responsibilities. We get this type of story every day, whether we're in Winderup, whether we're in Tubus City, or I'm in Kianta. There's a story like this. None that you don't try and use yet. Pay a lot of money, budget fees, and Navajo's just, we pay salaries, but we have a citizen that the system is working against right now. There's no other option, no other solution that's been brought up by the Navajo Nation. And the other is that these certain mortuaries choose not to deal with the nation directly because of the behavior of the deal pay that they have never paid on time. And that's the reason why these mortuaries choose not to deal with the nation. Those are the division directors, the department managers' responsibility to make sure those payments are paid out. And, you know, Jess, I know that there's, look at the branch, there's nothing to tell you, I'm sorry how you felt when that mortuary company told you, I can't pay you, because Navajo Nation doesn't pay, pay their deal. But I guess I have to say I'm sorry to you. These people work for, you have to just miss. And pay, pay them the salary. And we shouldn't be doing this to our Navajo people. I want to shed light to this. And this is a real story. There's one, one person that told me, oh, this is not going on in my agency. That was from leadership on, on town. But there's a story that comes out, and this is a family that's directly affected by one of the, uh, tribal policies that's in place. And this person is, um, being singled out, this family, that person, the late Jess Begay Senior. I don't, is this, is there a way that they can file a lawsuit to the nation? Is the sense of filing a lawsuit against the nation, is that in order? In order to get our programs to, 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 to do the, to, to provide services to our Navajo people? These monies are not, are their money. Every day we say the Navajo people's money. But yet, the citizens, we choose not, the program chooses not to pay out, here they qualify. Really hope that Health and Human Service, that, that, that you shed some sort of light to this issue. And, um, it really frustrates me. I'm like, oh, the, 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 you, oh. I could bring you another person next week, and tell maybe the policy is, is, is addressed it. Or maybe the, uh, program finds other ways to work with the program, with, with, with the Navajo people who has census numbers, who rightfully, their money, they thought of paying for. You just see what the president aligned items. I lined items this, because it's the Navajo people's money. And then this belongs to the Navajo people. And we have this. The Navajo Nation just did a form of discrimination to the late Jess Begay Senior. I do, I don't, I really hope that, uh, the Oversight Committee, I bring this to you, because you're the direct oversight and. and we could, you know, we can get it to Navi. And let's see how many of the twenty-four delegates have certain stories of this, just like the family of Jesse Gay, the late Jesse Gay Senior, what they're going through. How many families are they doing this to out there? Honorable Chairman of the Health and Human Service Committee, Honorable Vice Chairman, later, Committee Member Paul Begay, Committee Member Pernal Halona, Committee Member Charlene So, and Committee Member Edith Wonika. This is a story directly from the Navajo, the Navajo citizens. And I really would like to, we got to shed light on this issue here.
Whoever's talking, please need your phone.
Let me check it, um, I was house, I mean, I'm sorry, I was house. I, I, I saw somebody a golden bag because Malcolm knows where the keys are. Let me see if there are any tracks.
Okay, uh, committee members. Um. Hey, stop it, the phone need to mute Atlanta. Um, committee members.
This is, this is LaTanya. May I make a, um, may I make a statement, please?
Oh, please, go ahead. I gotta keep you happy.
Um, I just wanted to provide some general information. Um, when Social Services is working with these funeral homes, um, they're obviously paying for services on behalf of the Navajo Nation, the Navajo people. Um, because they're paying a service, they have to comply with the Navajo Nation Procurement Act and its rules and regulations. And in this case, Social Services did so. Um, they procured, um, and they identified these funeral homes um, in order to, um, to provide these, in order to pay the amount to these funeral homes to be able to pay for these individuals who passed away from COVID-19. Um, it appears as though the Flag Staff Home may not have been involved in the procurement matter. But one thing to consider is that the nation only has twenty-five hundred dollars to pay for these funeral homes. Um, and some of these funeral homes may, may, may make a position that it may not, that twenty-five hundred dollars may not be enough to pay for that. So that's something to also consider, that, that, um, Social Services has to comply with the Procurement Act. And then also some funeral homes may, may, may make a position that that twenty-five hundred dollars may not be enough to bury that individual. So I just wanted to provide that clarification, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I guess, sir? Go ahead.
Honorable Halona, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, you know, I have a question about that service. So, uh, the contract that Ms. Gishy was talking about, or twenty-five hundred dollars for these, uh, funeral homes, that's to pay for the whole service, uh, the casket, the transportation, the burial and everything? Uh, we already know that most, most funeral costs exceed that amount. Uh, the twenty-five dollars is just an assistant payment for some of the people. I know I went through this already and that's the assistant. And then what was, what was over the amount of money that the, uh, Department of Social Services paid for, we have to pay for ourselves. And, uh, so I think, uh, we need, we need some kind of explanation on that. The last time we talked to Ms. Gishy, it was under the understanding that the contract that they had with the different mortuaries was to pay for the, the whole service. And that was twenty-five hundred dollars. And some of the mortuaries, uh, said they couldn't do it for that amount. And that's why they didn't get on to the program. And so, uh, with just assistance for outside mortuary, I don't know why they can't just pay the twenty-five hundred dollar check to the individual and they go to the mortuary and pay for that. But whatever, uh, other expenses on top of that, the family needs to pay for. That's how I understand the program. Uh, but maybe, maybe Ms. Gishy can, uh, reiterate that part about, uh, the, the mortuary that they have contracts that, that's to pay for all the funeral services. Uh, I think we're talking about two different things here. I just need to get a clarification on that. I want everybody to understand what the, uh, mortuaries are, 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 are not, Department of Social Services, how they are, are setting up their, uh, program. Sir?
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Um, before we go back to Ms. Nedwood Gishy and, uh, Ms. Desente.
How's it going?
A lot of the programs or a lot of the folks, uh, namely a mortuary in Alameda. They have a backlog. At the time that the family had two deaths. And they weren't going to be able to have the burial for, uh, two weeks. So the family went to an alternative. And, and so. I guess the, the, the main issue is during this time, during this time, you know, the council is going to be basically doing some waivers. In the other areas, waivers for right of wa, waiver, waivers to be able to, um, get some of these funds out to the communities. In this regard of burial assistance for COVID-related deaths, can we not have waivers in place? Let me just summarize this. The folks in the Tchee, Kaibato Copper Mine area, when, when there is a passing of a relative, they don't go to Tubus City. They go to the closest one, in Page. Same way with the Holbrook. Folks in the Dilcon, uh, Indian Wells area, and perhaps even as far west as Loop, they're going to use a mortuary either in Winslow or Holbrook and not deal with somebody that's in Winderock. Or TeBennito. So those types of, um, aspects, there, there really has to be, um, this particular item, you, and, and basically you've established policy that the committee never put a stamp of approval on, that you're running forward with it. And I'm going to pull this particular aspect that the committee has to look at the amendment to this policy. Just like we're going to be, we've, uh, basically, uh, made a amendment to the person to be able to have COVID-related. We're looking at, um, in other aspects. The aspect of, um, hazard pay, executive duty pay. We'll be looking at those policies. And it just seems like, uh, you're going forward without ever having us approve the COVID-related death burial assistance policy. And Mr. Haven, I, I would, uh, look to you for, uh, and to Ms. Desente to, uh, talk like the amendment to those policies.
Sure.
Um, Honorable Wanika, so Honorable Halona. That request of DOJ and Legislative Council, um, in accepting this report, can you also put that in a form of a directive?
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Halona.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Haven.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I would recommend, uh, getting a sponsor, um, for, uh, Legislative Council to look at amending, amending the policies in respect to COVID-19, uh, burial assistance, uh, uh, death-related, uh, nineteen burial assistance. And we can certainly, uh, do the amendments where necessary. And, uh, we just, um, we need a sponsor and we can start the process. Thank you.
Uh, Sutilla, uh, Honorable Wanika, are you in Winderock today?
No, I'm not. I don't want to sit there. I usually am from there.
Oh, how about you, Honorable Halona? If we could get this, uh, uh.
Adam, turn it down to two hundred.
If we could get the, um, proper paperwork signed, that would, that would help us get this policy amended rolling. Halona, are you in Winderock? Okay, let's see what, how we can. Uh, Mr., Mr. Ron Haven. I'll be in Winderock tomorrow morning to be able to sponsor that legislation then. Uh, hey, look, committee members, are you ready to take this to vote?
Chair?
Okay, uh, Honorable.
Leave it, leave it, don't, don't do that. Leave it.
Okay.
I should go to the bashers and get this stuff with my young school step car.
Hello, whoever is calling the bashers.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, for us.
Mute your phone. Mute your phone. Okay, uh, maybe she heard us. Uh, on the burial assistance, uh, new, because I see you go. And we're, we're making a whole bunch of, uh, uh, limitations on the, so. Uh, thank you for, uh.
For, uh, losing the concern, yeah, even out here in the northwest region, the Page area, Tchee Copper Mine, description house. Their burial assistance, even, uh, I think a lot of the majority of the people use services to connub. Uh, Mazdell Mortuary. Maybe there should be some type of a study then to see where a lot of our Navajo people, uh, use these services. And then, um, perhaps in that way, they can make agreements with these mortuaries. And then the other thing is maybe. Bringing their loved ones home is, is such a, a, a task in itself, trying to get your, your loved one home. Perhaps maybe, uh, have a form, some type of form developed that says yes. Some type of a form, a document that can be made up that, uh, certifies this person is yes or no Navajo. Uh, and, and, and that person is entitled to this, uh, financial support. Uh, trying to find answers. And just, just going from one place to another and calling here around, it's very frustrating. And here we are, uh, having people go through all this, uh, hardship again. Uh, uh, or, or, or we just add on to their, uh, yin and, and frustration. They, 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 Mazdell Mortuary, and they, they, oh, how you, you. Uh, you, 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 what the best, uh, for them. So they prefer certain mortuaries. So I, I, I think that we, we need to go to the outline areas, maybe outside the, our, our reservation borders where, where our people use these, uh, facilities, these, uh, mortuaries. If, if we just depend on this Tubus City mortuary. So, uh, in this case, some type of a form could possibly be used to certify that our Navajo people that, uh, that passed on, our loved ones that passed on, uh, can get help by use of vacation. And then again, we need to work with these, uh, other, uh, popular mortuaries that our people use so that, uh, we don't, uh, even the word discrimination seem about. So if we don't, if we don't allow, uh, some of these, uh, well. So if we don't, if we don't allow, uh, some of these, uh, well-used mortuaries, then we are, uh, in effect, uh, leaving out a lot of our people from the service that we talked about. Uh, Chief, Chair.
Thank you.
This is Doggysol.
Hello, Sutilla.
Oh, yeah. Uh, just to shed some light, um, the Tuba City Mortuary in two thousand fifteen chose to do away with the Navajo Nation contract because of the same issues of that same mortuary and flagstaff of non-payment. As I remember and recall, talking with Ma- Malcolm Begay at that, or Michael Begay, the Navajo Nation at one point owed him, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars and they had not paid out. And, uh, the, and that is what, what is going on. Our tribal program, um, that whether there's, is, they're, they're, they're using the, the six thirty-eight fund, which is a, has a maximum of, uh, two hundred and, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars with income stipulation. But now you have a COVID which the director indicates is thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars. I really like the fact that, uh, policy change. I just wanted to shed light that, that, that Tuba City once upon a time did that. And I believe the Navajo Nation finally paid him in two thousand eighteen. There's a history of, uh, payments not being paid. And, uh, those is clearly the fact of our workforce. And, uh, when and how do we hold, uh, programs responsible for not issuing payment? So that, uh, these mortuaries don't get away from, uh, or, or choose to exit these contracts. Uh, we have to go back and provide that credibility for the, the word Navajo. And my gosh, when the Navajo was, the Navajo was using that mortuary and how Mr. Begay felt ashamed that he was told that Navajos don't pay their bills. Uh, Chief, uh, 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 Chairman, um, I may be in Windorot at, 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 about five o'clock today, four, four thirty. I'll be glad to co-sponsor with you on that legislation to change policy. And, um, Honorable Paul Begay, I, I don't, I, Mr. Wanika, so, Ronald Halona. You know, these are Navajo people. Maybe it'll take testimony from Navajo people, directly from our Navajo people to start looking at policy change in certain programs. Because I tell you, division directors pay, paint a pretty picture to council. Oh, and you know, we're going, this, this is our numbers and per, uh, service is really good. Just think, if we went through every program on the Navajo Nation and got a, a testimony from, from the Navajo citizens like this, what type of, um, policy change would the nation start moving forth? Oh, but I really truly, um, um, uh, uh, thank you, guys, and, uh, Health and Human Service Committee. Um, so, uh, of course, I, I asked him if you want to be on, on the phone line and, and testify to this and provide testimony. He chose to. And I thank him. That the system is going against him right now and I, I'm sure they found a way to, 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 to finance the cost. But they still have a bill to pay. And they, and, and they, I guess, they were not asking for the full payment to, to, for the full cost to be paid for. This was something. And, uh, policy is what we need to look at and we need to change. And one thing I think we need to put to the feet is that due to the, uh, issue of, um, I guess, the managers and the division directors, maybe if we part, put in a stipulation of withholding ten percent of their salaries. If things, if pay bills are not paid, uh, you have something triggered that, I believe, uh, without any accountability. Uh, if the program was providing just really good adequate services, really good adequate services, Jessica's family wouldn't have reached out to me for help. Nina Billy of Coal Mine Chapter wouldn't have reached out to me. Her family wouldn't have reached out to me for help. Joetta Golds' family from Tuba City, who are relocating from Coal Mine, family would have never reached out to me. And I have, and, uh, I don't recall the other two, but I can get the name. These are going on in my, in my...
That's confidential information.
In my, um, area.
Sutilla, uh, Mr. Haven, um, Honorable Otto So will sign on. Otto Sutilla, thank you, that'll save me a trip tomorrow. I can, uh, postpone the trip to perhaps Monday, dolly. Uh, committee members, I'm ready to take this to a vote. Do you have any other comments or, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is Deanna, may I provide some remarks, please?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education Human Service Committee. Uh, thank you for, um, the comments and recommendations. Um, just to do follow-up, um, yes, I agree that, um, the Division of Social Services has not made payments timely to the contracted mortuaries. Um, and so to streamline that process, um, with our January eighth, two thousand twenty Plan of Operation changes, the, um, burial assistance program was moved under the Department for Self-Reliance. The intent was to utilize an existing, um, case management database for payments to be made timely. And that's what the Department for Self-Reliance, um, Mrs. Roxanne Gorman is the department manager. Um, she's trying to coordinate, um, with OOC to have the burial assistance, um, information input into a case management database so it can be uploaded, um, through a data port and so payments can be made every two weeks. Um, those meetings have not, um, really occurred yet. We have not had adequate, um, response, except it cannot be done. But the Nomination TANF program, they use that same database and they, they use a data port, um, to pay more than three thousand, um, families, um, I'm sorry, two thousand families, um, on a, on a bi-weekly basis, twice a month. And the data port works so when, when families need to be paid, um, they enter the database, they have it, a check, um, come out the next day. And so that was intent regarding the burial assistance, we're looking at the GA payments. Um, so we're trying to streamline because the process is already there. And again, there has been numerous emails from, um, Mrs. Roxanne Gorman requesting, can we see your policies that it cannot be done? Um, but we have not received any feedback, there's no, um, meetings to clarify. So that was intent of the, um, the move of the financial assistance, um, program into Department for Self-Reliance. Um, now currently, um, with the nomination COVID-19, um, payments, when we administered the funds directly within Social Services, that we were able to pay, um, with a, a P card every day to the mortuaries. Now that we are using the, the EP funds under, um, the Department of Health, those payments to all the more contracted mortuaries are going out every Friday. So we have, um, seen where there were some areas of concern and this is where, um, we're looking to, um, address the, the situation. Um, and so I'd like to, um, say, Mrs. Gorman, would you like to add on any other comment regarding the data port usage?
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, this is Roxanne Gorman, I'm the department manager for the Department for Self-Reliance. I have listened to the conversation and the concerns and I do understand, um, that these are difficult times for families and the added, um, demands of meeting criteria does create, um, for the family, um, additional stress. We are trying very hard to improve the, um, manner of how the burial assistance is handled. Now I do want to say that those contracts that were approved were prior. We're hoping that in the upcoming year, two thousand twenty-one, we'll have a separate contract and a new process in place because currently we're having to work with the current process that we, um, was transferred in January. But there is an approved process, um, TANF can attest to that. We do use the data port and we serve right now three thousand families. And we do it well, we do it efficiently and effectively. While we attempted it with, um, um, with Ly Heap and other funds, we were denied. Um, it was never clear as to why because there was an audit that was being conducted and I believe it was on tribal programs, federal, um, we're federally funded, we're not tribal funded, that created this problem. And I kept attesting that we have a good track record. We have had a clean audit for ten years or more, that we have meet, we meet every federal requirement just to reassure the controller to allow us to use that data port. I wrote back in February to ask if we could meet with them to address the concerns they had. We have not received any feedback whatsoever. And as for the policies, the six thirty-eight policies, there are clear requirements that are imposed that we must comply with. Now the new Navajo Nation COVID-19 is different, that's general funded. That has a lot more flexibility than the six thirty-eight funds. And so with six thirty-eight, we have to stay within our service delivery area. We were to serve indigent individuals that don't have the resources. And then the maximum of twenty-five hundred was imposed by the Assistant Secretary. The only way it can be raised is we go to the Assistant Secretary for all tribal, um, nations that receive this fund to increase it. So those are some of the federal requirements we must comply with. But we are in the midst of trying to move forward and automate. And I do again feel for this family that they had to endure added stress. It is difficult and we have pushed out information on both six thirty-eight and the nomination COVID-19 per the request of Council Delegate Otto So. We sent it out to all the chapters. We sent it out, we've been putting it on the Navajo... And this new six thirty-eight, um, COVID-19 has not, um, the criteria is still per the BIA letter that we received, that we must comply with as well. So those are my immediate comments and I do appreciate listening in on the conversation and I do feel for these families. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Ramona Antonis, I just wanted to let, um, the committee know that, and Ms., Ms. Wood, that I'm also on the call. Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, committee members. Chair is ready for the vote. Mr. Moos, roll call vote, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior?
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Carl Slater red.
Honorable Ronald Halona?
Honorable Green.
Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Edison J. Wanika? Honorable Edison J. Wanika? Honorable Charlene So? Chair, a vote of three, uh, two, one.
Okay, thank you, uh. Mr. Moos, so left of record show two in favor, one opposed, the chair now voting. So we still have a quorum. Uh, now let's go to five B.
Chair, can you hear me?
Uh, now I can.
Okay, I, red.
You vote red, okay. Uh, Mr. Moos?
Aye, sir.
Uh, you heard, uh, Ms., uh, Honorable, uh...
Yes, sir.
Yes. So the, restate the vote.
Vote, the vote is in favor is Honorable Paul Begay Junior and Honorable Ronald Halona. Opposed is Honorable Carl Russell Slater and Honorable Charlene So. So the vote is two, two.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we move forward onto our agenda. Um, let's see, the second item, we have, uh...
Chair, this is report passed or not? Uh, it sounds like there's a tie, which means you might be, you might have to be the breaking vote, if I'm not correct. Sorry, this is Delegate Charles, can you...
Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Martinez, what is the, the rule on a vote on a report?
Uh, Mr. Chair, a vote on the report, if there's a tie, the chairman will have to vote. Mr. Chair.
Hmm, I guess the reason I wasn't voting was because in Navi committee meetings, when we are receiving a report, Speaker Damon just lets it go. So, but in this case, uh, uh, the vice of, uh, legislative, Legislative Advisor, um, Beverly Martinez, um, the chair votes red.
This is, this is, that'll get what they come back, come back.
Oh, uh, we're still talking about the vote on accepting the report?
Honorable Edison J. Wanika, which way do you vote?
Uh, green. Uh, green.
Okay, then the chair goes.
Okay, so, Mr. Moos, the new, um... The new tally on with having Honorable Winika, uh, voting.
That will be three in favor, two opposed. The three are Honorable Paul Begay Jr., Honorable Pernell Halona, and Honorable Edison J. Winika. Opposing is Honorable Carl Russell Slater and Honorable Charlene So. Three-two.
Okay, so in this case, then, the original tie vote then has changed to a vote of three in favor, two opposed, and let the record show that the chair did not vote in that respect.
Chairman? Chairman So?
Yes. Before you move on to the next item on the agenda, could I request for a directive to have the division director write a letter to the family that just provided this testimony, whether they are denied or approved? And that way, we have a stance from... They have a stance from the tribal program of what the process is and giving out the reason of why for the record of the family and future possible, um, paperwork just to have the items in writing. That's what I request, to have the division director and the division on the self of family, self reliance, send the person, the family, a letter, whether they're going to help them or not, not verbally. Thank you very much.
Committee members, you've heard the request of our colleague, Honorable Otto So.
Chair, this is Winika.
Yes, Honorable Edison Winika.
Yeah, I think the program already probably already has a process. So we can just let them know to follow through with that process of informing the families. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Deanna. May I provide a comment, please?
Uh, Ms. Nezwood Gishy, go ahead.
Thank you. So in order for any written response of denial, we don't have where they had submitted a request at the mortuary for consideration. So we cannot do a denial if there was no application submitted. Thank you.
Oh, oh, gosh. You're treading on light ground again. So, okay, we're just gonna have to... Satilla, um, we're gonna just have to, uh, look at that issue in the amendment to the policies. Yeah, because even as chair, I know of, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, um, six families that were denied. And certainly, they, you know, they made contact with, uh, the program manager. And they were told that mortuary doesn't have a contract with the nation. So whether... And so in that respect, there's a denial. And so I wonder where, you know, what the answer, Ms. Gishy. That's where we... This process, there's some missing links. And, uh, Mr. Haven, let's make sure that is part of the policy amendments. And, uh, Satilla, uh, go ahead and sign the document to get the policy amendment, uh, signed, uh, for that sponsorship. Uh, let's go forward. Um, so...
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Haven?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, just provide me as much information as you can on the request for services with our office. And, uh, the way I understood, um, the statement there by, uh, the program is that the mortuary decision is provided and the denials are there and no application is actually submitted to the program. It's, uh, that's the way I understood. And then, uh, and that there's no contract with the Navajo Nation, um, insofar as the service providers, the mortuaries, and that's the latest I've gotten from the statement in the last two minutes on this issue. So if you can just provide as much information insofar on the legislation request, that would be helpful. I will try to get a hold of the applicable policies on this entire matter and get the resolution out as soon as possible. So I will be contacting the division, uh, that the programs they're in that are, uh, concerning the family burial assistance and try to work with them as much as I can insofar as developing policies that may be more, a little bit more workable for payments to be made to the families affected. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Haven. And I'll forward you the chain, email chains that we've been going back and forth with, uh, um... To help guide you with Ayla. So there is, when a mortuary or when a survivor calls the number that's provided on that page, that document, that person that answers the phone gives a yes or a no, whether it be a verbal request or not. There is a verbal denial. And see, that's the part that is really the frustrating part. Um, so... Committee members, um, we, uh, should say Delegate, um... Vince James, are you still on the call? Could I, uh, committee members? Several items?
Several items.
Could I, could the chair ask the committee members basically to suspend the rules and, uh... Go straight to the legislations? If, uh, Delegate James was still on the line, I would have went to the, um...
This is Delegate Slater. I'll make that motion, Chair.
Okay. Um, uh, thank you, Delegate Slater. Um, do I have a second?
Second, good.
Um...
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Delegate Halona.
Um, Honorable Chairman, this is Beverly. Um, we have Honorable Pernell Halona present in person in the BNF conference room. Can we appoint him pro temp to move these legislations to the next committee level? To avoid, um, scanning the documents back and forth through email and delaying the committee report process, Mr. Chair?
This is Winika, motion.
Oh, I see what Ayla. That'll give us a chance to steer, uh, Honorable Halona in our direction.
Thank you, Chairman.
So at this time, I'll, uh, do the, uh, motion to suspend the rules and go to the legislations. Um, motion by Honorable Carl Slater, second by Honorable Pernell Halona. Mr. Moos, a roll call vote, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Red.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Did you say red, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Okay, Chair, a vote of three in favor and two opposed.
Okay, good. I don't have to vote. Let the record show a vote of three in favor, two opposed, and, uh, chair not voting. So the next item we will address is, uh, under old business? Is it old? Yeah, old business, we have three legislations. And legislation, oh, let me go ahead and turn, um... Ms. Ms., uh... Ms. Martinez, do I need a vote to have, uh, Honorable Halona, uh... Chair these, the legislations?
Um, Mr. Chair, yes, you do need a vote to appoint, um, Honorable Pernell Halona as pro temp chairperson.
Committee members?
Back to you. Motion, Winika?
Thank you, Satilla. Honorable Edison Winika makes the motion to appoint, uh, Pernell Halona, Chairman Pro Tem for this meeting, for these legislations. Do I have a second?
A second.
Honorable Carl Slater, second. Roll call vote, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Pernell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
One more time, Honorable Charlene So. Chair, a vote of four, favor zero opposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moos. Four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Honorable Pro Tem Chair Halona.
Thank you, Chair. Pro Tem.
Miled up. Go ahead. Okay, uh...
Miss Beverly Martinez, can you assist, uh, with legislation 28619? Legislation number 0286-19, presiding Honorable Pernell Halona, pro tem. An act relating to law and order, health, education, and human services, Navi ESH committees and Navajo Nation Council amending legislation CO 6417, declaring the second Friday in May to be known as Navajo Police Officer Day within the Navajo Nation. Mr. Pro Tem and committee members, this is going to Navi ESH, and this is one of those that, um, on June 11, 2020, per Office of Legislative Counsel and Office of Legislative Services memo, to have each standing committee revote on any action the committee took on legislations between the date of May 16, 2020 to May 28, 2020 that could potentially be challenged and ruled invalid, uh, Mr. Pro Tem. The legislation has been read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, committee members, a motion, please?
A revote motion?
Motion, Paul Begay. Second, Winika.
A motion, Paul Begay, second, Winika, we get voting, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Daniel E. So.
I, I vote green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Charlene So. Pro Tem, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, so, uh... Committee?
Ron Haven here.
Yes, Ron.
Uh, just real quickly, um, if there were any amendments, um, uh, how is this vote here? Is this the final vote on the resolution for the, uh, the resolution that was, uh, to have a revote on? Were there any amendments? If there are other amendments, um, what was the motion in parties intend here to include other, the amendments as was originally presented when the committee first considered this resolution?
Mr. Haven and Pro Tem Chairperson, the original roll call was May 20th. Main motion held by Charlene So, seconded by Paul Begay Jr. The vote was four in favor, zero opposed, vice chairperson not voting. The yay votes were Charlene So, Paul Begay Jr., Edison J. Winika, Pernell Halona. There was no names and absent excuse was Daniel E. So, signed by Carl Russell Slater, vice chairperson. And there was no amendments for this legislation at that time, on May 20th, 2020?
Okay, uh, uh, thank you. Uh, you do have some other resolutions to similar situations. So my advice and Legislative Counsel's advice is to go and go back to the amendments and vote on those again and then do your final vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
How does the vote for the final legislation, this one, revote or revoke?
No, this is already the revoke for this one. So, this one's taken care of, you go to the next legislation.
Okay, that would be done.
This one's done.
Okay. So, legislation, uh, two eight six nineteen is completed. And we want the next two legislation, uh, Ms. Martinez, uh, one one seven three, one one seven twenty three.
Legislation dash zero, one one seven dash two zero. An action relating to health, education, human services, and NABQ supporting H R two three three nine, a congressional bill entitled Protecting American Lungs and Reversing the Youth Tobacco Epidemic Act, Act of twenty twenty. And the committee report on this one was dated May twenty, main motion held by Honorable Paul Begay Junior, seconded by, uh, Edison J. The vote was four in favor, opposed, Vice Chair not voting. The yes votes was Paul Begay Junior, Edison J. Wanika, Charlene So, and Pernell Halona. There was no nay vote, absent is Daniel E. So, and signed by Carl Russell Slater. Um, there was no amendments. The legislation has been read into the record for revoke.
Okay, uh, committee members, there'll be, uh, a second action and a first legislation to revoke, uh, uh, we do have a motion.
Motion Paul Begay. Second Wanika.
Committee members, please second.
Need a second vote.
Second Wanika.
Motion by Paul Begay, seconded by Edison Wanika, uh, we want to continue the vote, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Daniel E. So.
I vote green.
Honorable Edison J. Wanika.
Green.
Pro Tem, a vote of five in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. President. One one seven twenty, action, uh, vote of five, opposed, vote not voting. Ms. Martinez, please pause, please, uh, zero one one eight twenty.
Legislation number zero one one eight dash two zero. An action relating to health, education, human services, and NABQ, supporting final written determinations of the impact program, U.S. Department of Education concerning impact aid to the state of New Mexico for the periods July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand nineteen, and July one, two thousand nineteen through June thirty, twenty twenty. Mr. Pro Tem and members, this is going to NABQ, and the committee report was dated May twenty, twenty twenty, the main motion held by Honorable Edison J. Wanika, seconded by Charlene So. The vote was four in favor, zero opposed, Vice Chairperson not voting. The yay votes were Edison J. Wanika, Charlene So, Pernell Halona, and Paul Begay Junior. There was no nay votes, absent was Daniel E. So, and signed by Carl Russell Slater, Vice Chairperson. And legislation one one eight two zero has been read into the record. There was no amendment at that time, on May twenty, twenty twenty, Mr. Pro Tem and members.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, uh, committee members, do we get a motion, please?
Motion Paul Begay.
Motion Paul Begay, second please.
Second Wanika.
Motion by Paul Begay, second oneika, so we need to get a vote, please.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Honorable Halona. Honorable Halona, this, uh, as a matter of, um, on the actual legislation, the title, uh, the word aid is missing from that title. And could we determine it to be a typographical error? Cause the agenda item is the right title, but the legislation, um, does not have the word aid. The legislation. Uh, that would be, uh, uh, a determination.
Thirteen, impact, is it from aid, A I D? She's asking you if you want a grammatical correction.
Yes, I mean, we can do a grammatical correction.
Um, the Pro Tem requests to do a grammatical correction, committee members? To insert aid on line thirteen in the title.
That's fine.
Mr. Haven, do you have any objections, or is that okay with you as legal counsel? Line thirteen to include aid after impact, aid program?
Uh, that's fine. A I D.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm here. It, the, the spelling is A I D.
And you don't need to make an amendment, I, I would say, would just be a grammatical correction.
Uh, yes.
Okay, I will note that in the committee report.
Correction to the question, and, uh, Mr. Moes, we continue with the vote.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior voted green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Doug Slater, green.
Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Daniel E. So.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Wanika.
Green.
Pro Tem, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, uh, motion, legislation passes, at zero. Vote not voting. Martinez, respond to, uh, legislation, uh, legislation zero four six twenty.
Legislation number zero zero four six dash two zero. An action relating to health, education, human services, and NABQ committees, supporting Arizona House Concurrent Resolution, two thousand one, Arizona H C R, two thousand one, title, English Language Education. Mr. Pro Tem and members, this is going to NABQ, and this has not been considered by the committee, so therefore is, is listed under new business.
Okay, uh, we need to find out, uh, is, uh, Honorable Counselor delegate, Mr. Brown? Are you online, Mr. Brown? Next.
Honorable Brown, are you on the telephone call?
So, can't hear it.
One more time for Honorable Brown, are, are you online for legislation zero, zero forty six twenty?
Okay, committee members, if you don't have a sponsor for this legislation?
Move it on. Move it.
Well, just go ahead and, uh, you need to name your calls to move it on to the next agenda for the next meeting. Hearing that, we'll move this legislation on to the next meeting. Uh, Ms. Martinez, if you please, read the next legislation into the record, zero one one nine twenty, please.
Legislation number zero one one nine dash two zero. An action relating to the Resources and Development Committee, the Health Education Human Services Committee, NABQ Committee, and Navajo Nation Council canceling the Navajo Nation Fair, Fourth of July Celebration, the Northern Navajo Nation Fair, and all the other fairs, rodeos, ropings held on the Navajo Nation during twenty twenty. To Pro Tem and members, this is going to NABQ Committee, and this is listed under new business. Mr. Pro Tem.
Okay, uh, so, our next sponsor for this legislation is Chief Charles Lewis, you change, are you on the line?
I can barely hear you, brother, but I am on the line.
Okay, okay, uh, committee members, do we get a motion, please?
Motion Wanika. Second, Paul Begay.
Motion by Edison Wanika, uh, seconded by Paul Begay, uh, we have any questions?
Uh, this is Doug Slater, I have a question.
Got a question, sir, okay, uh, uh, Honorable Junior, could you go ahead and, uh, do your presentation, please, and we'll have, uh, questions afterwards?
Okay, I can barely hear you, brother, but I think you said go ahead and introduce the legislation, is that what you stated?
Yes, uh, yes, we'll have, uh, we got, uh, one member that wants to have a question, so if you could go ahead and present your presentation.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, honorable members, uh, the Health Education, uh, Human Services Committee, I appreciate the time, uh, to introduce zero one one nine dash twenty. As stated, as stated already, this legislation is to cancel all Navajo Nation Fairs, Fourth of July Celebration, the Northern Navajo Nation Fair, and all other fairs, rodeos, ropings, and roping events held on the Navajo Nation during twenty twenty. The reason why I sponsored this legislation is, as long as there's one person who has the coronavirus out there and there is no vaccine, we are all still at risk. We have all heard about the second wave that's scheduled to hit, um, here within the fall. We have all heard from, from experts who have talked about this second wave. Certainly, our numbers on the Navajo Nation have not flat out, they have not, we have not started coming back down. I believe there was only one day where there was not one reporting of any new cases, but the next day we did have an increase of cases again. At this point, we continue to encourage our people, uh, to practice social distancing and to also wear our masks. We are also encouraging our people to not attend any events where there are five or more people in attendance. With the Navajo Nation Fair, as we all are, are, are well aware, of all of the fairs on the Navajo Nation, I should say, there are always more than five people in attendance, one. Two is, in, for some of the fairs, there are thousands of people who are in attendance. So, social distancing will be difficult to try to enforce and to encourage. Many of the fairs are held outside, and we do, we are aware of many of our Navajo people who have dated, um, either social on social media, or when they are out there, um, when we see them out in the community, that if they are out in the open air, that they don't need to wear their mask. What I worry about is that, you know, many of them may, may decide not to wear their mask if they do attend this event. We are currently in a situation as leaders having to make decisions on behalf of our people, in the best interest of our people, and this legislation does exactly that. I currently do not have an agent from the Department of Ag on the line. I know that, uh, it was stated in R D C that there are some issues regarding, um, whether the contracts that are, that were entered into because of the fair, um, may be an issue, um, and so that was brought forward. But at this point, the Department of, um, Agriculture, which has taken over the majority of the fairs, um, has not stated where they stand on this legislation. Crown Point is as far as the only fair at this point that has taken the initiative to cancel their fair. Uh, I know that, uh, that President Sasse also issued an executive order to cancel the Fourth of July Fair. At this point, those are the only two fairs that have, that have been canceled. Um, there was a question regarding, you know, why do we need to pass legislation if there are executive orders, uh, being sent out by the Office of President and Vice President? And I will tell you this, um, the President may say that there are already executive orders in place, and this may be another legislation that he may decide to veto. However, I did ask for assistance, um, from Office of Legislative Council to, to define an executive order and how that executive order affects the people of the nation, a proclamation, and also situation. It is my understanding that an executive order can be aimed at those inside the government, but that does not, I, I don't know, and this is where I'm actually looking for guidance from Office of Legislative Council, I don't know if that executive order actually would, uh, qualify as far as keeping Frasier Brothers, who does carnivals on the, on the Navajo Nation, whether that executive order counts. Um, so I did ask for some clarification on that, and I have not received that yet. See, a proclamation, in my, is, in my understanding, is aimed at, is aimed at those individuals who are outside of the government. Um, and so that may include, um, like I said, you know, people who are coming onto the nation for the fair, um, but again, I, I'm still seeking clarification on that. The last is legislation. Legislation, my understanding, is law, law that's passed down by the council. So, this law would apply to the people and then those who are coming off the Navajo Nation, onto the nation, uh, for these, for these gatherings. So, at this point, we did get some clarification at R D C from the Office of the Prosecutor, who did say that, yes, there can be public health orders that is in place. That states, you know, that there has to be social distancing, that, um, masks have to be worn, um, and that, uh, no, no gatherings over, uh, of one or five people, however, people continue to do this. In fact, we did get a reference from one of the R D C members who did, uh, state that rodeos continue to happen on the Navajo Nation, that families are continuing to move over, um, with hosting these rodeos. So, the question that was posed to me by R D C, and it currently is still at the legislative council, is how can we regulate these types of activities, and what are the consequences for people who continue to ignore these, um, these orders that are set in place? I think those are really good questions. Again, we did have Prosecutor's Office on the line when this legislation was presented to R D C, and according to the prosecutor, Title seventeen does still cover the, um, the violation of this, of this executive order that is in place.
He's not here.
One is the suggestion that has been provided as far as enforcing, regulating, is to possibly exonerate the families who are sponsoring these events liable. And have, and, and if any case of coro- of coronavirus should, um, break out at these events, the family hosting the event would then be liable. Um, and this may be a way to try to prevent, um, families from wanting to violate, uh, this executive order in this legislation that we are currently... this executive order in this legislation that we are currently, uh, currently, uh, talking about today. So again, I, I did suggest, um, after the question that there could be a possible amendment to add civil liability to make the parties hosting the events liable. This is very, this is in place across the Navajo Nation. There's a, there is a, a law called the Dram Shop Liability Act. And what that is implicated in a bar or even a person who is hosting a social event where alcohol is involved, continues to serve an individual and that individual drives off, hurts somebody else or hurts themselves, the, the person, the bar owner or the person who is hosting the social, sorry, this is background and it's really hard to...
Hold on a second. Hey, Paul or somebody, are you on the line there? We hear your conversation. Could you please put your phone on mute? Continue, Gina, thank you.
Oh, yeah, um, so, so right now, uh, again, you know, I did, we did make the suggestion that an amendment can be added, um, to hold parties civilly, um, liable to, uh, to violating this executive order, which would help with the rodeo event. As far as the, um, concern that, that RDC did raise about the, uh, contracts that are currently in place, many of us have heard in the, in the presentations that have been provided to us by our enterprises, the term force majeure. Um, this French term, I think it's French or Latin, uh, basically is a term that's used in contract language that frees liability of both parties because of something, something extraordinary, um, like an event that, uh, is outside the party's control that may have happened. So a really good example is, um, if the NFL was hosting a, um, a Super Bowl party and the whole stadium, uh, you know, it snowed the night before and that whole stadium was, was filled with snow, um, they could postpone that, um, event to allow the NFL to come in to clean up the stadium and nobody would have any right to do them because they were not the ones who filled the stadium with snow. That was Mother Nature. So that's kind of a good example of, um, of what, um, I guess, uh, force majeure. So we did have a lengthy conversation in our, with RDC when this legislation was presented on the, and how a nation could possibly look into that, um, into that topic or into that issue. Again, I did seek Legislative Council's assistance on this and I haven't received any, any word back. I was told that we would have something more, um, affirmative and when we got to NABEESK. The last issue that did come up was there was a suggestion to amend the legislation to include ceremonies and religious gatherings. That is a separate legislation that I think is not, uh, changes the intent of this legislation. Um, and I, uh, I did tell the, uh, RDC brought this up, that they are welcome to, um, to drop legislation to do that, but because ours are dealing with, um, you know, fairs and dealing with events that are not covered under fundamental law or that do not, um, um, you know, that, that don't cover religious gatherings, that we could possibly, uh, leave that for a separate, a separate matter to have, um, someone who, who wants to drop that legislation do so. Again, this, this legislation pertains primarily to, um, to rodeos and the various fairs that happen here on the Navajo Nation. I hope that I covered everything and I, I do apologize, I did include and this, um, information that was, um, provided from RDC. I, I feel that this, uh, committee needs to be aware that I'm certainly working with Legislative Council to get, get questions addressed and we'll be ready for it, um, at NABEESK. Thank you.
Okay, just to be clear, uh, uh, one point, uh, Eugenia, is, uh, it does not include the ceremonial that happens in Gallup, because that's not on the Navajo Nation, correct?
Yes, these events are only those events that happen on the Navajo Nation because those are the only events that the jurisdiction over.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, uh, committee members, we had question, uh, Honorable Slater?
Thank you, Chair Pro Tem. So I just want clarification that this cancels or prohibits any of those sorts of events, even if they are not conducted by the Navajo Nation or some entity of the Navajo Nation, right? So if you're a private party performing this, you are prohibited by this if it were adopted.
Michelle Huhn?
Uh, yes, Honorable Slater, that's exactly what it's doing. And I, I know that there was a suggestion to add in other events, um, that, as, um, I'm looking through my notes right now. Uh, the late, I mean, the, the, um, the legislation stands as is. There were no amendments made at RDC, um, aside from some suggestions that maybe, uh, the legislation could include and also clarification as well. Thank you.
Douglas Slater, you have any follow-ups on that?
And can we just clarify one more time with the penalty, sir?
At this time, the penalty is still, oh, sorry, uh, Honorable Halona, can I answer that question?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead and proceed.
Sorry, I didn't mean to overstep you. Um, so at this time, the, that current or in existence are those that are covered on Title seventeen. But the concern that was raised by RDC is that many of these penalties are enforced. So there is the possibility of making the amendment to include a civil penalty, which would, which would, uh, I guess, i- it would put the, the individual who is hosting the event liable. Um, a- and I think that that would make a lot of families think twice, twice about hosting events, um, a- at their home if...
I'm sorry, this is Douglas Slater, I, I can't hear, uh, Douglas, Charles, another on the line?
Uh, Mrs. Slater, yeah, I, I think she, her phone dropped out there for a second, but, uh, just to repeat what she said, that, uh, the, uh, civil, a civil liability... Eugenia?
Hello?
Okay, we can hear you again. Uh, repeat that again, starting from the civil penalty?
I apologize, right now, right now, the current language is under... It is actually that people, you know, who, who have these events could be, um, it could be punishable under that part of Title seventeen. So that makes it a criminal violation. One of the suggestions is, that was presented, is to make it a civil liability. So a criminal liability is going to be the government, i- i- I guess it's the government versus an individual type of case. Civil liability is a person versus another person. And so there is currently in the federal, uh, you know, across ev- every state, there is this, this language called the Dram Shop Liability Act. And this is, 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 is a really good example of how a person would become civilly liable in an event, um, it's the Dram Shop Liability Act is basically a law that says that if you are hosting an event that deals with alcohol and if a person who attends your event, um, leaves your event and gets hurt and part of that, that accident or part of that hurt involves alcohol, you as the person who was, you know, who held that social event would become liable. So you would become liable for all of the expenses that were incurred by that person. Even though who was there, um, you know, knew what, 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 what could happen, i- it kind of puts responsibility on the person who is hosting the event. Um, a- and, and that's really what it does. So at this point, a- and I did leave this to the RDC members, um, to consider as an amendment, but again, no amendments were made. Um, so one of the suggestions was to make an, an individual who decides to host a rodeo event, um, make them liable. So if somebody were to attend and they were, they tested positive for the coronavirus and let's say they spread it at that event, the family hosting that event would be liable. And I think that that would prevent, um, families from, uh, you know, from hosting these type of events because I don't know of any family on the Navajo Nation who has thousands of dollars who could, um, you know, become responsible for, uh, those type of activities. So that was a suggestion, but again, no amendments were made at RDC. Does that answer your question, Honorable Slater?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, any more questions, uh, uh, committee members? One more time for the committee members, any more questions on this legislation? There being none, I just have one statement. Uh, I think that's, uh, uh, probably a good possibility that we need to end that, uh, include that at the NABEESK session so that it would deter, uh, people from having those kind of events and, uh, keep people from, you know, it's a safety issue for the Navajo Nation to keep people, uh, healthy and well and not being, uh, exposed to being, uh, uh, to the COVID nineteen virus. Uh, committee members, if we do not have any more questions, uh, uh, Mr. Moth, can we get a vote?
Honorable Paul Begay Junior?
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Douglas Slater, red.
Honorable Charlene So?
Green.
Honorable Daniel Eso? Honorable Daniel Eso? Honorable Edison J. Wanika?
Green.
One more time, Honorable Daniel Eso? Pro Tem, we have a vote of three in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moth, uh, the legislation will pass and be moved on to NABEESK. A vote of three in favor, one opposed. Pro Tem not voting. Our next, next legislation is, uh, one, zero, one, three.
Honorable Halona, I'm sorry, I just wanted to thank you very much, House Committee, uh, forward to the passage of this legislation, NABEESK. If you have any questions, please, so please, a- and I, and appreciate the, uh, the, putting our people first, again.
And thank you to, uh, Delegate, uh, Charles Newton. It is a decent legislation, I think will, it'll go through. Committee members, uh, we're trying to contact, uh, Mr. Damon, Chair, uh, Speaker Damon, he's the only sponsor on the next legislation, uh, one, three, two, zero. And so far, we have no response from him, so, um, this is kind of an important legislation. I don't know why he, uh, where he's at today, but, uh, we'll try to, uh, get a, a response from him. In the meantime, uh, before we do the close of meeting, I'd like to have, uh, we'll, we'll just move on with the close of meeting announcement, anybody? We still have report, oh, we still have reports, oh, okay.
Halona, uh, I'm gonna lose you guys here soon. Just a reminder, we have the two o'clock, I believe it's two or three o'clock, end of meeting today.
Okay, yeah, that's true, I, I, I did forget, thank you for that reminder. Um, committee members, uh, I guess we're gonna go ahead and pass the legislation, one, three, two, twenty, until the next meeting, unless, uh, or unless, if he shows up by the end of our session today, I think we'll go back to the reports now. Do we need a motion for that? I just...
Honorable Halona?
Hey, sir.
I'm back on.
Okay, uh, Chair, we're done, we're gonna pass the legislation, one, three, two, twenty, because, uh, no contact from the sponsor. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and go back to the reports. C? B. Okay, that's five B, uh, Chair, uh, do you want to take over?
Okay, we didn't have anybody with speakers, let's play.
Hold on a second, uh, uh, so, 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 uh, Seth? Chair Speaker, Chair, uh, Speaker Damon, are you on the line, then?
Maybe if you call him Speaker Bates, like M-Tech was yesterday, he'll, you can summon him.
Okay, uh, so, uh, Speaker Damon wants, uh, somebody else to sponsor this legislation?
Um, Chair Pro Tem, this is Douglas Slater, I'm happy to co-sponsor. Would that require me coming to the mic right now?
You have to sign a co-sponsor deal in person. Um, I guess I could turn the, the chair back over to, uh, Delegate, uh, oh, it's not gonna get forward.
Um, if we could, geez.
How are we gonna proceed here?
Well, I could preside and come in. So I guess Chair Stowe also said he's coming in tomorrow morning, they just need the committee report by not...
Yes, yes.
So, then you have Pernell, because I want to talk to Pernell.
Then Pernell could be the...
I'm still, I'm still here, I can't, he's gotta sign. Uh, Delegate Slater, did you say you could come in the morning? Says it has to be signed this evening. If it's gonna be held up, up on the agenda for tomorrow, it needs to be signed today.
I thought it just has to be, I mean, it could, if, if the report is available, there's a proposed agenda, they could just motion to add the legislation on it, right?
It's a what? Yes. When? According to our, uh, advisor, whoever's gonna be co-sponsor, you need to come in and sign it today if we wanna get it on the agenda for NABEESK tomorrow.
Yeah, I think the, the question right now is if, if Chair Pro Tem to Chair Daniel So, then co-sponsor this legislation, then Chair can sign the committee report by NABE tomorrow. And you'd be able to sign the co-sponsorship this afternoon, but that's only if you're... But that's only if you're...
All right, do you want to sign it tomorrow?
We're going to get confer with Potera in Office Legislative Services before we make that determination.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, this is Speaker Damon.
Oh, boy.
We're in business.
Okay, Speaker Damon, I guess we can go ahead and proceed. Enter the record, please.
Legislation number 0132-20, in action related to Health, Education, Human Services, Budget, Finance, and Navi Kehit committees and the Navajo Nation Council, approving and adopting the Navajo Nation Cares Fund Expenditure Plan for Special Duty, Personal, Protective Equipment, and Facility Safety Assurance. Mr. Pro Tem, Chair members, this is going to the Budget and Finance Committee? Oh, he's on, he got off.
Mr. Damon?
Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people around the world communicate for free. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.